I wanted to welcome everyone to our December the 15th, 2020 Commissioners Meeting. Welcome everyone. Welcome our new Commissioners. Just about everybody's new except me and Mr. Doherty. So welcome y'all aboard. And we've had a tough year. Hopefully this coming year is going to be better. We've got a lot of work to get done and I look forward to working with all of you. Not going to say that we're going to always agree because there's several different opinions sitting here. But the main thing is we want to keep in mind why we're here is to make decisions for the citizens of Wayne County. And I don't see no reason why in the world we can't. This is going to be a good board. This is going to be a good board. Okay? Have invocation. Also I'd like to remind everyone to silence your phones please. We have invocation, Mr. Freeman-Hardison.
Come on in everyone. Bishop Slater was supposed to do the invocation for me but unfortunately he hasn't arrived yet so bear with me. Bow your head please. Our Heavenly Father, let us meet in harmony today, do our duties and for the citizens of Wayne County. Dear God, please bless and help those families that are in need and those that are suffering from the virus. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Commissioner Gurley has to pledge.
I pledge my flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hardison, Mr. Gurley. So I have a motion to approval of the minutes for November 17th, November 23rd, December the 1st, and December 7th meetings. So moved. Have a motion on the floor, any discussion? If none, all in favor, show your sign of right hand. Any adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Honeycutt?
If I could, I didn't. Was there any unanimous on the minutes?
Um, I...
Forty minutes. I wouldn't hear for all of them so I didn't vote for the minutes.
Did not.
I did not vote for them as I wasn't here for those seats.
Do you want to ask, because a non-vote counts as a yes, do you want to ask if anybody doesn't want them approved?
Is anyone opposed to approving the minutes of December, November 17th, November 23rd, December the 1st, and December 7th? One.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We would like to add, under special presentation, number five, discussion of budget issues with the Health Department. And our Health Director, Dr. Brenda Weiss, is here and she'll have some words that she would like to present. And then, under consent agenda, we would like to add a number 10, as we discussed during the pre-agenda, the CARES funding reallocation.
Anyone else have any adjustments?
And then we remove the budget amendment as we discussed for, by Pink Fuquer. And also, if you look at the agenda, we do have two sets of public comments. We would have public comments right after number 10 and not public comments after committee reports.
Okay. Now, I would like everyone to keep in mind, we do have a public hearing at 9:00 and at 9:30, so we may have to juggle the schedule just a little bit, but we see how it plays out. We may not have to, but just in case, because we can start a public comment section early, but we can delay it for just a few minutes. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Special presentation?
We need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion that we approve the agenda. All in favor, show your sign of right hand. Okay, special presentation, Mr. Honeycutt?
I'd like to ask our home of registered deeds, Ms. Judy Harrison, please come forward.
Greg, if you will stand in front of the podium with the, those added, they need you directly.
Okay. We just want to thank and recognize Judy for the work that she's done for Wayne County. Judy has worked and committed her life to Wayne County for 36 years. Started in staff and then was elected to register deeds. We appreciate what you've done, your commitment to Wayne County, and your commitment to the Office of Registered Deeds. And on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, Wayne County, we would like to present you this plaque.
Thank you.
So if you have any words you'd like to say?
The only thing I have to say is it's been a pleasure serving everyone. I hope to continue to help you in any way that I can, and God bless you all. Thank you so much.
Next item is Resolution 2020-37, Resolution awarding service weapon to First Sergeant Harvey Walls, and presentation of retirement plaque and service weapon. I think sure for you handling that. I'll ask First Sergeant Walls to join me, please. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Another bittersweet day for the Wayne County Sheriff's Office. I'm losing one of my senior folks to retirement. Amanda has dedicated much of his life to service of Wayne County. And at this time, I'd like to present a plaque on behalf of Wayne County, presented to First Sergeant Harvey Walls, in appreciation of 19 years of dedicated service as a county employee, August 6, 2001, December 31, 2020. Congratulations, sir. Thank you. And I also, at this time, would like to present First Sergeant Walls, his service weapon. First Sergeant Walls has been a detention officer who was also a weapon carrier for Wayne County. Transported inmates throughout the state to different facilities, as well as to the hospital at times, and he was responsible for guarding in those situations. And it's inscribed, "For meritorious service, dedication, loyalty, friendship, and professionalism." Thank you that you have demonstrated during your career, your presence will be missed, but your accomplishments will not be forgotten. Thank you, sir. Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, I've got the resolution. If you will approve, ask for approval on that, please. Yes, sir. Do we need a motion on it?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution 2020-37.
Mr. Gurley made the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, show your sign of right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. We have time for Davenport to present. No, we still got one more.
No, we got a working dog.
Disposition of the working dog?
Okay, I'm sorry. Presentation, or motion to disposition of working dog to Corporal Stephen Ash? Mr. Chairman, I request that our service dog Knox be retired and presented to Corporal Deputy Ash for him to keep as a personal dog, which is normally approved by the Commission, and he takes full responsibility of the dog at that time. Okay. And my understanding is when we release one like this, that they've served her, basically served her time out. They have served her time. For medical reasons and age reasons, they are retiring Deputy Knox, the K-9 unit. We do not need a motion on this?
Yes, Sheriff.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agreement to disposition of working dog to Corporal Stephen Ash.
We have a motion on the floor, any discussion? If none, all in favor, show your sign of right hand. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
And thank you for what you and your department does.
Thank you, sir.
We got time for number five?
Now you go to your first public...
Okay. for ground lease with Stroker Racing Incorporated at Duane Executive Jetport for a 20-year term with options to renew. And I think Mr. Gray is here to explain this to us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen aboard, thank you for your time and consideration here. We have, out of your jet port, we have some corporate area expansion projects that started a couple of years ago. We put in the infrastructure and the pad-ready sites for corporate hangar construction. Those are coming to fruition now. We have a interested party coming to build, construct their hangars there, so they're ground leasing the ground from Wayne County and constructing their own hangar facility. This is for standard, kind of following the airport generalities across the industry and across the state. The terms of the 20 years with an additional 10-year option at the end, at the 20 cents per square foot, just standard language there. We have two confirmed and the possibility of two more, so that would be a total of potentially of four. So, are there any questions?
Any questions?
How many square feet?
Yes, sir. So, the first two will be 10,000 square feet each, so 100 by 100. There, that's because the original sites we built were 100 by 100. This gentleman would like to build a bigger than 10,000 square feet, but you get into fire suppression systems and those things. So, they're working with the county's engineer at the jet port, W.K. Dixon, now, to try to design a bigger site and meet all the objectives of the fire code. So, it's potentially, they could be 12,000 square feet if they can meet all their objectives.
Okay.
And one of the things we want to make sure we remember is that as part of the lease is there's a guarantee that there will be $1 million worth of taxable assets that will be listed for Wayne County. So, that's $66,050 annually, a minimum. But we believe it'll be much more than $1 million once the jets are fully in and the hangars are fully built.
And that's the personal property aircraft value, not including the hangar itself. So, absolutely.
Yes, sir.
This project will almost double your value of your taxable assets at the jet port. It's a big project.
Please state that one more time.
This project has the potential to double, exactly almost double, your taxable base at the jet port.
And for the general public that's listening, if the jets or planes are housed here, this is their base, this is, they pay their taxes in Wayne County. So, just to clarify that.
And that doesn't include fuel and everything else and maintenance that we have with existing businesses there, so it really is a win-win for the jet port.
And this is probably going to double our fuel sales?
Most likely more than that, yes, sir. And the main, the really big benefit for Wayne County in this deal is we're a jet port. So, if you need to, if you want to be a jet port, you need to be a jet port. And these jets are, so the state gives money out for runway expansions, runway strengthening, facilities expansions, based on your justification. Well, it's a unique situation. You have to have big airplanes before you can justify a facility to support big airplanes. And this does, this meets all those objectives. We're big, we're large enough to house these jets, but it also gives us justification with the state. So, it's a, that's probably the biggest benefit for future development.
Mr. Gray, how many flights do you have coming in a day?
It varies based on time of year. Somewhere between 30 to 60 operations per day is what we're seeing, depending on when the flight school's flying and those things.
Do you still have manufacturing using the jet port?
We do occasionally, not as much as we'd like to see. We do have a forklift now that allows us to offload freight, so we have a revenue stream from freight management there. But it's really not as much as we'd like to see.
But it's built to handle, I mean, the runway's built to handle something on a smaller version.
It is, absolutely. And the one big project we have right now on the docket with the Division of Aviation is our ramp, which is the area out in front of the building, is not as strong as the rest of our jet port is, meaning the pavement strength. So, it can't support as much traffic as the rest of the airfield. And we've got that on the docket, we've got the plans done. So, once we get that done, when we did the expansion, we put in the fire lines, so these guys coming here, they want to build a bigger hangar, well, that's not an issue for fire suppression because we did all of that a couple of years ago. This board was very supportive in putting that infrastructure in. So, because of those decisions, this is coming to fruition now, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Gray?
If this project is approved, what's going to be the timeline on construction?
Yes, sir.
And would it be creating jobs within the county?
So, we're putting a 12-month time period on the first two that we're issuing now. If there are two more, those will be 12 months from the time those are signed. So, the construction period should be 12 months or less. And as far as jobs, the main, the only jobs they'll be creating would be the maintenance, so they're going to have to bring in a mechanic to maintenance these aircraft, and their pilots. So, their pilots, they'll have to have an aircraft manager and two pilots for the four aircrafts. So, those would be the jobs.
And just to mention as well, I didn't know if everybody knew that we also house UNC Air out at the jet port as well. So, there's two helicopters and there's supposedly a jet coming from UNC Air to be, supposedly a jet coming. But it really is an incredible asset to have here in Wayne County, not only for the tax base and for the fuel cells, but also for public safety as well.
So, you guys, come see us. I'd love to give you a tour when the weather gets a little nicer and it's comfortable for you. Come see us.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone else have any comments to make?
There was no one signed up, sir.
No one signed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Gray? All right, Mr. Doherty? I think you got a motion?
I have to close the public hearing.
Oh, okay. Y'all bear with me if I'm having to retrain myself. If we have no other comments, I declare this public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve a ground lease with Stroking Racing Incorporated for up to four hangars at the Wayne County jet port for 20 years with a 10-year option to renew, contingent on Stroking Racing maintaining at least $1 million of taxable property in each hangar.
I have a motion on the floor, any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor, show your sign of right hand. Motion carries unanimous.
And I do want to thank Brandon and the work that he's done, also the Airport Commission. They have really done an incredible job. The expansions that we've seen out there for in the last couple of years has been really amazing and the grants that we've gotten and just the additional work. Brandon has really done a great job and we appreciate that.
And also, this is not the only company that has approached Mr. Gray. My understanding is there's other interests also, but this will help enhance, hopefully, getting more aircraft and more hangars.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, you know, several years back, when there was a reorganizational plan for our jet port, there was some questioning the reasoning of that. But today, I think we see that it was a very sound decisions made of reorganizing, creating the jet port commission. These representatives that are volunteering to serve on our jet port commission for no pay, and they spend a great deal of time enhancing our jet port. And just a big shout-out to not only the jet port commission, but Brandon and the job that you all are doing. Just to see that we are, in essence, doubling our tax base at the jet port within two years is just amazing, just amazing. So, just an attaboy, thank you.
Can I add it up?
Yes, sir.
That shows when you have a leader with a vision, you can make things happen. We appreciate that.
And also, you know, when we come on the board, we think we have the answers for some things, but after you sit on this board for a little while, you realize there's things going on that you don't realize. Because when I came on this board eight years ago, I was really not a airport, jet port fan, but you, when you get involved, start getting involved in it, you see where you can get a tax base like this. This offsets having to get revenue from somewhere else. But it's, thank you again, Brandon.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Do we have time for Health Department report?
I would go ahead and do your, oh, yeah. It's too early for that.
Davenport.
That's going to be, is that the, well, whichever.
So, we go ahead and do Davenport now, and then we could do the public hearing, the residing after Davenport.
Okay, all right.
Would like to introduce Ted Cole with Davenport. Davenport is kind of our, who we lean on for financial information. They help us with our bonds, they help us with debt financing. They're that third set of eyes that look to make sure that we are telling you the right information and that we're moving forward in a correct direction with respect to our finances. And it's been a great working relationship with Ted and Davenport. Mitch, we appreciate what you do and we thought this would be a really good time, especially for new board members, to kind of give you a quick update of where we're at, options we have with respect to debt financing, capacity, those type issues. So, when we start getting into budget season, we can start making decisions that you have some information and a basis to move forward with. So, that's our turn.
That's great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Again, my name's Ted Cole, I'm with Davenport. You all should all have a hard copy in front of you and what's on the screen for others is exactly the same. There are page numbers in the lower right corner. And if you go to page one, we've got the contents. Couple of things that we want to cover today and like to keep this interactive, so if you have questions along the way, please stop me and we can answer those questions. This will be new for some of you, obviously, and those of you that have been on the board have seen iterations of this previously, but we're going to, we're going to cover a couple of slides on bond ratings for local governments, counties in particular, and give you a sense of where Wayne County is with your bond rating. We're going to talk about your existing tax-supported debt profile, so that is everything that you have on the books today that has, is a commitment that you've made in prior debt issuances and how that pays off over time. We're going to talk a little bit about some of the county's debt policies that have been adopted in prior years and how those work. And then we're going to finish up with a discussion on what I'm calling a couple of near-term projects, a school project and a DSS health project. There may be other projects out there, a broader, larger CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, but for the purposes of today, I think we wanted to focus on those two projects and leave you all with that and then be able to come back and have a more expansive discussion, pulling in other projects as needed. Kind of covered page two. Let's go to page four, and we'll talk about bond ratings. On the left-hand side of the page, you will see there are three national rating agencies that rate local governments, and the two that are most commonly used are Moody's Investor Service and Standard &amp; Poor's. And Wayne County has bond ratings from both of those firms. We've highlighted them there in the gold box, so you are a AA2 rating from Moody's and a AA rating from S&amp;P. Keep in mind, for any local government, city, county, town, state, or even country, the highest rating you can achieve is AAA. So, you are a couple notches away from that highest AAA level. You'll see in the top left-hand corner, these rating agencies publish reports on Wayne County periodically. Moody's last published a report in May of this year. S&amp;P last published a report in 2017. Just because it's been a few years since they published does not mean they're not looking at you. They look at your audits, they look at your budgets and other things to make sure that the rating they've assigned to the county is appropriate. On the right-hand side of the page, a little bit of perspective on county ratings. We have purposely excluded cities and towns here because the financial dynamics are a little different with a city and a town. And we subscribe to data that Moody's maintains, and when we talk about counties across the country, they rate 93 different counties as AAA. A number of them are in North Carolina. They rate 75 different counties as AA1 and 144 counties as AA2. So, Wayne County is one of those 144 nationwide counties that is rated AA2 by Moody's. Within North Carolina, you can see the nine AAA counties, the 10 AA1 counties, and the 14 AA2 counties. So, from a bond rating perspective, those would be your rating peers, those AA2 counties. And you'll see they're spread across the state, right? And I'm sure you recognize the names and maybe know a little bit about them, but from a rating perspective, those are all counties in North Carolina that have the same rating as Wayne County. Okay? And our goal has been all along, over the years that we've worked with the county, is to, at a minimum, maintain the rating you have and look to improve that rating as we go forward. Not only a sort of a pride factor, but it's also a direct, it has a direct correlation in your cost of borrowing and how much interest you pay on a bond and what kind of debt capacity you have. So, it's an important metric. Not every piece of debt that you do requires a rating, but certain pieces of debt that you do, you do need to have a bond rating to do that debt. Okay? Real high level on page five, this is the methodology by which the rating agencies go about rating local governments. And on the left-hand side is Moody's, and what you'll see is they have four areas of focus. Economy and tax base is worth 30% of the rating. And by and large, you all as a board and your staff, that's really a part of the rating that you don't have a lot of short-term control over, meaning month-to-month or maybe even year-to-year. How do you evolve on tax base, tax base per capita, earnings and wage levels? It's a longer-term effort to move those sorts of indices. Finances is worth 30%, so we're talking about things like your fund balance. Where is it today, but also what has the trend been in fund balance? And from our perspective, that is both something you can control in the short term... And from our perspective, that is both something you can control in the short term with your decisions, month to month and budget to budget, but it's also a long-term effort. Management is worth 20% of the rating. So you're getting into things like budgeting practices, policies, procedures, that sort of thing. And then finally, debt and pension obligations is 20%. So that's kind of the universe of all the things they look at. And they look at audits, they look at budgets, they look at other information, and they go through a pretty detailed analysis to come up with your rating. On the right-hand side is S&amp;P. They get to about the same place. They got a few more moving parts, but by and large, the methodologies are pretty well-aligned. So it's not, your bond rating is not just about debt. It's about all these other factors, management, economic development, and, you know, your operating finances as well. Okay? Go to page seven, and you look at the left-hand side, any dates that you see are fiscal year, so July 1 through June 30. In that chart in the left-hand side, you'll see we're also going back in time. And what we're measuring here is your tax-supported debt service, right? So that is annual debt service on a fiscal year basis. And you can see, when we go back to 2014, the payments on an annual basis were probably right around $3 million. And it started to step up. And the county was going through a period of time where you were addressing a lot of capital needs, whether they were school needs or county needs, public safety, kind of a broad spectrum. And the order of magnitude for those projects required debt. It couldn't be satisfied with just cash. And so as time was going forward, the county was issuing debt to support the CIP, and that annual debt service payment in your budget was stepping up. And it got to a peak of right around $10 million in 2019. And now what you see is it's down to the, you know, $8, $9 million range. And so where the green bars pick up is current year. Fiscal '21 is the year we're in. And then we did a little bit of debt this past year, so it's gonna step up next year slightly, and then it declines. All of the debt that you have on the books today, on the lower left, it's about $77, $78 million of debt outstanding. About $25 million of that was for non-school purposes. About $52 million of it was for school purposes. So that's kind of how it breaks out between school debt versus other debt. So you've got about 77, almost $78 million of debt outstanding. And what you can see either in the chart, excuse me, the graph or the chart on the right, all of that debt will be paid off by 2037. And we're showing you by fiscal year what your payments are, principal, interest, and total. And we know those payments, your staff knows those payments to the penny. All the debt that you all have outstanding is fixed-rate debt. There's no variable rate debt that moves up and down with the market. It's fixed rate. You have taken advantage of refunding debt, where you lower the interest rate in the past. You will certainly have opportunities to do that in the future as time goes forward. We try to look at that pretty regularly. So this gives you a sense of where you're starting from. The county has invested in capital. That annual debt payment has been stepping up. We're kind of eclipsing that, and it's gonna start stepping down. Keep in mind, this is before any of the new projects that we're about to discuss are pulled into the analysis. The last thing I want to talk about on page seven is that far-right column. It is, it says 10-year payout ratio, and that is, that's an important debt ratio. And essentially, what it's measuring is, in the next 10 years, over the course of the next 10 years, how much of that $77 million of principal will we repay? And generally speaking, higher percentage is greater, a lower percentage is weaker. It is a measure of how rapidly you're repaying the debt. And so for the $77 million of debt you have outstanding, in the next 10 years, 67% of that will have been repaid. And that's a pretty healthy level, which is good. Higher is better here. There's a small chart in the bottom right that gives you an idea of the other pieces, or the pieces of debt that make up this summary. And we talk a little bit about what the interest rates are, their prepayment language, and their final maturity. As I said earlier, we scour this pretty regularly with staff to make sure we're not missing any opportunities. I think we're caught up on refundings for the time being. But as time goes forward, passage of time, we get closer to the pay, the prepayment dates, there will be opportunities to refund some of this debt as we go forward. Okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On this, is there any way you could give all of the commissioners a breakdown of that? And what I mean by that is, as an example, you've got school debt of $52 million. Do you have a breakdown of that $52 million? Is that in here anywhere?
It is not in this book. We definitely have each piece of debt that makes that $52 million up and what facility it funded. Unfortunately, I don't have it in this presentation.
Sure, if you just ship that to us, that'd be great.
Yes. We'll send you the, and it might be 10 different loans, might be six different loans, everything that makes up that $77 million.
And then one last question. That is, down here in the corner, you've got 2011 QSCAB.
Yes.
That particular loan, actually, we are being reimbursed from the federal's government on that. Is that correct?
Not all of it.
Not all of it?
For a portion of the interest.
Interest, but when the federal government shut down, they didn't pay you when they shut down, and you still having to pay some interest on it. But it's not being reimbursed.
Okay, so not all of that is being reimbursed?
Right, there is, through this concept of sequestration, the federal government has cut a number of things. And one of the things they cut, they did not eliminate it. One of the things they cut was the reimbursement rate on this type of debt. So you are getting some subsidies from the federal government. Your staff applies for those every six months. It's a paperwork-type of process. And so it is, we're showing you the interest rate without the subsidy, but it is, there is a subsidy coming through that offsets that to some extent.
Mr. Cole, why is the, from 2021 to 22, 23, and 24, why is the principal higher than 2021?
Is the principal higher than 21?
You have 2021, $5 million, $5 million, $126, and then 22, you have $6 million. 23, you have $6. 24, you have $6. And then you drop back to $5.
Yeah, it's a new piece of debt that's stepping up, and the principal is moving from 5.1 to 6 million. And you can see in the principal plus interest over there under the total column, the total payment is going from 7.8 million to 8.8 million. So that's, it's a new piece of debt that we've just issued this past year that is starting its repayment in fiscal year '22.
Is that the one where we borrowed?
The $2 million.
Okay, yeah.
And that debt service of $777,000 will hit.
So it's added into this part right here, then? I got you.
Yes, that's correct. So this has everything in it, including the most recent borrowing that we did through Truist Bank, which was SunTrust/BBT merger. And that goes out to 2035.
That's the one that we got at 2.75%. On the 14, is that what you're seeing? That's the one that we borrowed, the $2 million?
No, it's the last one on that list. It's, it had some short-term and long-term pieces in it. So that's the very last one on that list, where it shows the interest rate is 1.5 to $2.
1.5, okay.
Yeah, the shorter part of that loan is a 1.5% rate. The longer part of that loan is a 2.18.
I got you.
But that's what's driving the bar stepping up from '21 to '22, or in the table, the principal and total payment.
And what is the interest rate on 2021 to $2 million? What is the interest rate on that?
It's a blend of all the different loans together. So this table on the right has all six or seven loans pushed together for a total debt service payment. So it's kind of a blend of all the rates you have that make up the interest.
What is the highest interest we're paying?
You've got some loans out there that have a coupon as high as 5%.
Is there any way to refinance that?
There will be. When those bonds were sold, there was a 10-year period where you're not able to repay it, that standard in the public bond market. And so that will be eligible for refunding in 2027. So there'll be an opportunity, just not at this moment.
So what you're saying is that top line, is that 4.33, is that like a combination of all together? Am I hearing?
No, that's just that one.
That's just that one loan. That chart at the bottom has 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 different loans that make all of this debt up. And each of them has, you can see they were issued in 2011, '14, '17, and '20. Each of them has their own interest rate or a range of interest rates, different prepayment language, different final maturities. And the graph in the upper left and the table on the right-hand side is a blend of all of those together, what I'd call your debt portfolio.
Okay, well, I'm gonna ask the stupid question then. So the 4.33% with the interest rates like they are on there, is there any, I mean, I don't know how the government works, is there any way that we could refinance that?
That is, that is one that you're getting the subsidy on, and that is one where we're showing you the 4.33%, but that rate is actually netted down closer to zero by the subsidy you're getting from the federal government.
When we get paid.
It's not exactly zero.
When we get paid.
And you have been paid. They haven't not paid you, they just have reduced the percentage of the payment they're reimbursing you for.
So instead of receiving, like when we make the interest payments, instead of receiving like 100% back each year, we're receiving like a little around, what, 92%?
Or even a little higher.
Okay, got you.
Okay, the chart on the left, the bulk of our debt is schools.
Correct.
I'm gonna repeat that. The bulk of our debt is schools.
Okay?
Mr. Chairman, if you say it a different way, is when you say it's county debt and school debt, it's all county debt, that county is responsible, not schools.
Right, right. The county is responsible for all of it.
Yes. Correct. Okay? Any other questions on that chart or table? All right, so I want to talk about a few of your debt policies, starting on page eight. This is something I mentioned on the prior page, that 10-year payout. It was that far-right column. How much of the principal that's outstanding are you retiring year by year and over the next 10 years? It's a 10-year forward look. And the way your debt was set up, each piece of debt that we issued over the years was set up in a way that we want to be able to demonstrate that red line is your policy, that we are at or above a 50% payout ratio. So we want these green bars to be above the red line, and they are in all cases. So you are in compliance with your policy and then some with the 10-year payout ratio. And then on that table on the right, this is where we compare you to other similarly-rated counties for this particular ratio. And Wayne County is in gold. That's that 67% payout ratio. And you can see what the national counties are, AAA, AA1, AA2, in the light green. And what the North Carolina counties are, AAA, AA1, and AA2, in the dark green. And you can see you're very much in line with the median, which is that bar. Some, you'll see within North Carolina, some of them that are rated AA2 and the same as y'all, have a payout ratio as low as 41.8%. Some of them are as high as 100%. You're at 67%. So these are the median measurements, and you line up very, very well with those medians. You've got a good policy, you're in compliance, and you compare well to similarly-rated peers. Okay? Another ratio is debt to assessed value. So what we're measuring here is that amount of debt outstanding, that 77 million as a percent of your tax base, which is almost $9 billion, right? And that will, that tax base will grow ideally year by year and when you do reassessments and revaluations. So when we do that math and we take the debt outstanding, just the principal, the 77 million as a percent of your tax base, your debt to assessed value is .87%. So it's just under 1%. Your policy in the chart on the left is not to exceed 2%. So you are below your policy, which is good in this case, and you have capacity within that policy to take on additional debt if you need to. So you're in compliance. And then on the right-hand side, the comparison, again, lower is better with this ratio. So you've got Wayne County in gold at .87. You've got the national counties in the lighter green, and you've got the North Carolina counties in the darker green. The national counties is a little bit difficult to compare here because when you get into other states, for instance, South Carolina, counties are not responsible for school debt. They have independent school districts that tax and issue debt. So the school debt in Richland County, South Carolina, as an example, is not on the county's books. It's on the school district's books. So the national comparisons are a little bit misleading here. But certainly within North Carolina, the dark green bars, you can see you all compare very favorably. Remember, lower is better here. So you've got a good policy, you're in compliance, you have some capacity to be talking about doing capital projects with debt if need be. And what we're gonna finish this conversation on is affordability. We have debt capacity, our ability to borrow money within these ratios, within our policies, with our rating. Debt capacity is not a particular issue for you all. You have issued debt in the past, but not excessively. And you have room within your policies and your bond rating to issue additional debt. I think the bigger decision will be, how do we repay it? Where are the revenues coming from, from a budgetary basis? The last policy I want to mention is on 10. This is getting to the annual payment on debt as a percent of the budget. And when we go through the math to do the calculation, you'll see you're at about, just under 8%. You have a policy in the red line that says we don't want to go above 12%. That's a pretty good policy, meaning it's a pretty conservative policy. We know of counties out there that are as high as 15 and 20%. So you have a policy to be at or below 12%. You're just under 8%, so you're in compliance. You have some room to take on debt if need be and still demonstrate compliance. And on a comparison basis on the chart on the right, you'll see, remember, lower is better here, you compare very favorably. Okay?
Cole, how do you get, how do you decide that you're gonna be at 12%?
Well, we look at a couple of things when we set those policies. And we set those policies a number of years ago, but we do review them every year. We look at the rating agency criteria or methodology for these types of things and where they have recommendations or ranges that they view to be acceptable for higher-rated counties. We look at for guidance from the GFOA group and the National Association of Counties, publish things about these. And then, specific to Wayne County, we look at your capital needs over, let's say, a five-year period. What are the list of projects that you all want to get done? Some of those will be cash-funded, some of those will be debt-funded. And we try to set a policy that acknowledges that there is likely to be debt that needs to be done if you want to achieve this capital plan. And we want to set a policy that kind of finds the balance between not being too high so it's irrelevant and not being too low so it immediately ties your hands from being able to do anything. And then we sort of take into consideration those rating agency and those other groups' best practices, and that's where we've landed. You know, there's always an opportunity to look at it and amend it if there's a good reason to do it. That is completely within y'all's purview. The other thing I will tell you is, if you find yourselves wanting to do a project that requires debt, that might put you out of compliance with your policy, you have the latitude to make an exception to the policy for a year or two or whatever it might be. And we have had a number of clients that have needed to exercise that. So they've said, look, this is an important project. We understand if we do this and we issue this debt, we may breach our we may breach our, our policy for a few years. Rather than just amending the policy to make it work, we are going to make an exception. And from a rating agency perspective, that's exactly what they want to happen, which is there was a conversation of the elected body. They knew the implications of doing the project on their policies, and they were willing to say, we need to make an exception. We'll be back in compliance within our policy within a couple of years. Those are all things that you all can consider as things move forward when you're looking at these policies and the order of magnitude of the capital that you might want to fund, okay?
Based on your knowledge, I mean, I mean, what kind of money are you talking about for us to, for us to stay up under if we decided to do a project? I mean, what kind of money can we borrow?
Give me a phone number quick.
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I can give you ballpark.
I assume it's the 101 million from the 75 we owe.
So it's gonna be a little easier for me to go back to like page nine.
Yeah.
You've got a nine, let's just round up, you've got a $9 billion tax base, right? And we have a policy that says we don't want more than 2% debt outstanding, okay? I believe that's by calculator, I believe that's 180 million. You're at 77 million. So you could, with that policy, that ratio alone, more than double your debt outstanding and still be in compliance. Now what you're gonna find is it's got a significant impact on your budget.
Exactly. So that, that's just, I was just asking.
You borrowed, you got to pay it back.
Exactly.
That's right. So yeah, that is an exercise we go through, like, what if we want to run our policy up to its max? And so that's order of magnitude. And, and debt service to expenditures takes a few more iterations to back into the same number. But it, it's probably gonna be a little more limiting to, you'll get to that 12% faster than you would get to the 2% on the prior page, okay?
And then your bond rating would probably go down if you went up, is that correct?
That, remember, um, debt's about 20% of the rating, so it's, it, that, that, all things being equal, that, that part of the bond rating, the debt part of it, would be weaker. But presumably there's other things going on that are necessitating this capital investment, maybe, maybe not. But it, in a vacuum, yes, it would weaken your um, your debt profile. Doesn't mean you shouldn't do it, but it would be a consideration, okay?
Well, I'm not advocating that we spend.
Understand.
103 million, I'm just, I'm just asking a number.
Right, understood.
You can't borrow yourself out of debt. Exactly. Let me ask you one more question on that. As far as to, now, just to make sure I understand how um government works. On your interest rate, on the amount of money that you borrow, I mean, is it, does that affect the interest rate still on far as the, the lower the interest rate? I mean, is there, is there a figure that you can borrow when it comes to government? Far as the interest rate, where it goes up and down?
No, so, so there's, there's, there's a handful of ways that you all as a county would borrow. You, you might go to a bank, right? And, and generally, when you're going to a bank, um, they're a little more sensitive to how much you're borrowing. They only want so much exposure to any one borrower. And so um there may be an instance where you want to borrow a, a, a large amount, and some banks just say, we can't accommodate that. In, in which case you would go to what we call the public bond market, and that bond market will facilitate hundreds of millions of dollars for, for an issuer if need be. It's rated, and the rates on that change every day. Now, they don't change a lot every day, but interest rates move around, um, they are very attractive. So there's really not a threshold where if you go above X, the rate goes higher. I think for, for banks, when you borrow more and more, you are making it, for some banks, a little bit harder to participate. And then generally, the, the term of the debt is what drives the interest rate. So a five-year loan will have a lower rate than a 10-year loan, which will have a lower rate than 15 and 20.
Basically, just like.
That's right, it's not all that different, really isn't. And you know, there are variable rate funding mechanisms available to local governments. Uh, in North Carolina, they are very infrequently used. Most are all fixed-rate debt with the ability to refund it in the future. That, that, the terms of that repay, pre, prepayment will vary. And remember also in North Carolina, you've got the Local Government Commission in Raleigh, which is a function of the State Treasurer's Office that oversees all debt issuance and has to approve not everyone, but most every piece of debt that you all might consider issuing. And they're gonna look at things like the term, the rate, um, other factors to make sure they're um comfortable that it's on market and also to make sure that you have a plan to be able to repay the debt. Thanks, sir, okay? All right, um, so let's, so that, that part of the book is where you are today, nothing new there. So we wanted to just talk about um a couple of projects under consideration, and this is by no means exhaustive of all of your needs. But two projects, um, you all applied for, maybe the schools applied for, and have been granted what's called a Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant equal to $15 million. And in order to um activate that grant, you have to do a couple of things. You're gonna forego lottery proceeds for a period of five years. Those are, lottery proceeds are distributed to you all periodically. We look at it on an annual basis, and essentially those lottery proceeds from the state will be withheld for a five-year period. And you also have to contribute out of your own funds, whether it's cash or borrowed, $5 million to activate the grant. So if you want to activate the entire 15 million of grant money, you've got to be able to spend 20 million. The 15 million of grant plus the 5 million of local match. So you would have a $20 million project, 15 of which was funded with grant. Not zero interest, just no principal, no interest repaid, and 5 million of local funds, which you could pull out of reserves, or you could debt fund, either way. And you will also forego those lottery distributions for a period of five years. And I'm gonna show you all of those numbers here in a moment.
Well, that's like the six and a half million dollars over the five years, correct?
1.2?
Uh, I think it's a little.
1.2 annual.
1.2 annual.
Right, that's right. And then, and then five years would be 6 million dollars.
Right, that's right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were adding.
No, I'm just saying five years worth at 1.25 is what I was told, so that's 6 million.
Okay, go ahead. That's right. And, and so you've got the, the lottery, the foregoing of the lottery at 1.2 a year, and then you've also got to come up with that other five to activate the grant, or to, to activate the full 15 million of the grant.
So we'll, we'll have $11 million worth of county dollars on a, a, the, the project, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And at this point, um, for the 5 million match, what's built into our models is not that, that would not be debt-funded. It could be, but for now, we've assumed that's provided um from county, county dollars, cash contribution.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt, a quick question. Allison, how much is remaining in the School Facilities Fund?
So when you're talking, the School Facilities Fund, um.
The sales tax.
Sales tax.
You're talking about from the completion of Southern Lane?
Well, yes, I mean, we got.
Let me check on that for you, because we did use some of that funding for the.
For the purchase.
Purchase of land, and I need to make sure there were no cost overruns on that. So if you don't mind, let me double-check on that for you.
Well, and the reason I say that is since those dollars were allocated specifically for funds, we could tap into that for a portion of this 5 billion dollars. Am I correct?
We've got about a million one flowing through our model already, which I'm guessing is the balance of that sales tax.
Yeah, and I, I believe that's after the land sale purchase, um, I'm just gonna double-check with the lady in our department.
So somewhere around a million dollars that we could flow out of that fund on the 5B, reducing our counties to 4B, am I correct?
They, they built that into, on page 13, they have built that into that.
Oh, I'm ahead of, okay, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of.
You'll see, we've got that million dollars accounted for, and, and I'll show it to you in a minute.
I'm sorry.
So it, I don't believe it necessarily will offset the five.
Okay.
But, so, so just again, just quickly wrap up 12. We've got that school project, and then we've built in to our model a potential DSS and health facility. We're using an estimated cost of 23 million, and we are, in terms of timing, assuming that could happen as early as this spring. Now, that's a pretty aggressive schedule to be, to get that done. Generally speaking, with the Local Government Commission in Raleigh, they do not want to approve your debt until a project has been designed and bid. They need to make a findings when they approve your debt, that your borrowing amount is adequate but not excessive, so not too much and not too little. And so as a general rule, rather than allowing you to borrow on estimates, they, they want you to borrow when you have the cost of the project quantified. But for now, we've assumed a spring borrowing, could be late spring, okay? Those are the only two projects that we, we've got in the mix right now. So I want to tackle the schools first on page 13, and I apologize for the small print. But this is a debt budget, debt budgeting model that has evolved over the years and has been memorialized with the school folks. And, and what I suggest we would do here is start on the left-hand side of the page. And under column A, we've got fiscal year listed. Remember, we are currently in fiscal year 21. Column B is the existing debt service related to schools. So let's call it, you know, 6 million plus or minus per year, right? And you can see that goes out to 2037. We know that school debt service to the penny. We have no other debt right now running through this, so no new debt is in this model, just the existing debt. Um, column D is in David is a pay-as-you-go commitment that's been made for $2 million a year. That's essentially cash-funded from current year revenues um for smaller projects. And so column F is simply a sum of B plus D, existing debt for schools only, plus the pay-go annual amount. So column F is the obligations to be made, to be paid. And then the middle of the page is where we identify several different sources of funding. And this all lines up with your budget process, and many of you will see that as you get into your 22 budget. Um, column G is restricted sales tax. That is, uh, I think a couple of different articles at least that are restricted for school purposes by statute. Um, column H is lottery money, and you'll notice there's a, there's a number of years there where there's nothing. That is where you're foregoing the lottery distribution as part of the Needs-Based Grant. And then it picks back up again, and you'll see we, we've got it at about a million two, million three a year. Edgewood Community School Savings, this ties back to um some, uh, an agreement that was made as part of that program to recognize savings, so those are, are dollars available to help repay this debt and this pay-go. The QSCAB subsidy under J, that is the, the reimbursement from the federal government for the interest on, or a part of the interest on that QSCAB bond that we talked about earlier. And then column K in the green box is what we've solved for in this model about what additional dollars you will need in those years to balance this program, okay? Without column K, there's a shortfall. When we compare column F and the revenue sources in the middle of the page, there's, it's insufficient. So we've got a backfill, and that's what we've solved for in column K. We need to come up with those dollars, starting in fiscal year 21, because remember, that lottery money has already been cut off. It was cut off when that grant award was made. So those have already started to be clawed back or, or not distributed. So column K is where we need to backfill for a period of five years. It's uh about $4 million. So it's not all the lottery money you lost, but it's about $4 million worth of revenue that need to be um pulled into this debt budget by virtue of having lost the lottery funds for that period of time. And, and the check on this is over on the right-hand side of the page. The long and short of it is, column F and column L are matched, as long as you can make those dollars in column K available. We did have a little bit of cash to start with way over on the far right, the school sales tax capital reserve that we talked about a moment ago. That, we anticipate spending that down over a couple of years. So between using those reserves, all of the other annual dollars that are in the model columns, that's columns G, H, I, and J, we need to come up with some additional dollars in column K to make all of this cash flow. And remember, this has no new debt in it, because the 5 million that would be needed to activate the grant, we've assumed that is not debt-funded, we've assumed it's contributed as, as a cash contribution. If it were debt-funded, we'd have to include that debt service under column C, okay?
Mr. Chairman, so I'll make sure I can, make sure I understand this. So basically, we got to come up with $4 million in 16 years?
Uh, $4 million in, in, it's about five years.
I thought you said from, from now to 37, okay, so you're saying it's just in the five years, we got to come up with $4 million?
Column K is what you're looking at?
Yeah, okay.
Right. Assuming that all of those other dollars, G, H, I, and J, um, come in, we have no reason to think they won't, but, you know, they are projections. So we need to revisit this on a regular basis. But column K is what you've got to come up with over that five-year period. And that's just to accommodate what you've got on the books today. Anything new that the schools might want would be additive to that, we'd have to find additional reasons.
Not including the 5 million that we got to pay out for the.
5 million does not run through that. That is an additional contribution that um you'd make, again, from reserves is what we've assumed. But if it's debt-funded, we need to pull that debt into the model.
So that's the 9 million plus the 6 million, right?
It's, it's, it's the 5 million of cash plus the 4 million in column K. That's the 9 million you've got to come up with to make this Needs-Based Grant work.
Right, but what, okay. But, but actual money, the other 6 million that we forego in lottery funds, we got to come up with that also, because we've got it allocated, right?
It is allocated for debts, I'm sure.
Right, okay.
And it's, it's in this model.
It, yeah, I want to, and we're not, column K is really what's, is, is really what is supplanting the loss of the lottery money. You are right, you are losing a million two a year of lottery money. But because your existing debt is stepping down and the way you're budgeting, you can get by with just contributing 4 million.
For the 6 million.
For the 6 million, but, but you are 100% correct, you are losing the 6 million if you stay at a million two a year.
Just, just a very simple look at it, that, you know, and this is discussions we've had, is that we're, we're, you know, it's a million two that I'm gonna be short starting day one, ju- just very simple.
Plus the 5 million.
Yeah, plus cash.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Let me think a little outside the box here, of trying to find where can we find the 4 million? And my question would be, is it possible? Because in looking at 2026, we are actually gonna have a surplus of 1.2 million dollars. In 2027 is 2,600,000. So roughly adding those two together comes close to the 4 million dollars in those two years. Can we not actually have a memorandum of understatement?
Can we not actually have a memorandum of understanding with the schools that we will advance those dollars, but would repay ourselves back in those two years?
I believe you could.
Are you, are you following?
I am following you. You, you anticipate future surpluses in this model?
Correct.
That start around twenty-twenty-six?
Correct.
And I'm not getting into the accounting of how you book it, but those future surpluses could be the source of repayment to the county for the five or six million, or whatever it is you put up front.
Greg, do you follow me on that?
I, I do, and, and I apologize for...
No problem.
The conversation with Allison, one thing that I do want us to always keep in the back of our mind is looking at the Edgewood Community Savings. That's a tough dollar figure to count on, because of the changes that occurred at Edgewood. I don't know if we ever truly got those savings, even though it was in our model, that may be a tough number to quantify in paying back debt service, because it was quote-unquote savings. We have, right now, if you, you can see that it is not in, a- as far as revenue for twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one, that he has it for twenty-twenty-two. The Edgewood issue is, that's always been a, a gray area as far as any savings that were supposed to be generated from that new wing, I just wanted to...
And it's not going to go away. You, you jumped horses on me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
Here's my question, though, Allison, and that is, I thought we had, in fact, removed that from the budget.
So, we, we did remove it from the budget this year. However, you don't see it in FY twenty-one, because what we did was pay them a one-time five-hundred-thousand-dollar capital, um, that, that grew their two million dollars that they receive every year to two-point-five for this year only.
Correct.
So we didn't really gain that this year, I mean, you can count the twenty-seven thousand, I guess. But the direction at that time, we did take the Edgewood line out of our budget, it is not in our budget, instead, we have the one-time capital of five-hundred thousand. So from our perspective, it has been removed.
Well, I mean, look, this was a tough battle, and I thought we had fought it and basically removed it in this year's budget.
It has.
And with the intention of never replacing it. That was my intention at any rate. So now to say that we're going to...
I, I, I'm just, to, to quantify the Edgewood savings has always been a tough road, quantify the exact dollar amount.
Are you, are we talking about the school itself, or are you talking about the, the...
There was supposed to be some administrative savings if a new wing was built on Edgewood.
Meadow Lane. But, uh, no, now back up here, back up, let's put things in perspective here. We negotiated with the school system in order to build Meadow Lane, and in those negotiations, they gave up the five-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars that we were funding for Edgewood. Now, forget about all the rest of it, the bottom line is, in those negotiations, the school system gave up their funding of five-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand. Then it got really complicated, and they complicated the dagum thing, and so we restored that for one year. But last year, we removed it completely. Am I correct when I'm explaining that?
Yes.
So, so that five-twenty-seven was used to finance Meadow Lane School. You can't spend it twice, you can't give it to them and also use it to pay debt service. So that is off the table, we are no longer providing five-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars to Edgewood by their agreement. We're using that to pay the debt service on Meadow Lane.
And that has been modeled out that way for you.
Well, and that's the way it's modeled, and we just need to stick to it, that's all.
Starting in FY twenty-two.
Right, right.
That's right, we just need to stick to it. Now, if I could go back to the four million.
Right.
What I'd like to, to find a way, since we do have reserves, but I'd like to see a plan to restore those reserves. So if we're going to spend four million dollars in reserves in order to make this school project go through at Fremont, then what I'd like to do is to have another agreement, a memorandum of understanding from the school system, that in year twenty-six and twenty-seven, those excess funds would actually be paid back to the county, because we had advanced that four million dollars. And I, I mean, I take it it's possible. We're going to have to have a revenue in order to restore the four million, is what I'm saying, and you're either going to have to raise taxes, or you're going to have to find those dollars somewhere else, and I'm proposing that rather than raising taxes, that what we do is, we have an understanding to repay the county after we put out the four million, that we get it back from those reserves, those surpluses, in year twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Certainly not a problem from a modeling perspective, but it's a question of implementing it, memorializing it.
Greg, I didn't hear a comment.
We, we, we can, and, um...
We're obligating basically those surpluses to come back to the county. That's all we're doing.
I thought we were responsible for, for funding the, the building to start with, maybe the five million dollars is part of the project cost, correct?
Yeah, forget about the fi- five billion, I'm trying to come over to four million that we're going to lose in lottery funds. That's all, I'm, I'm addressing the four million.
You're addressing column K there.
That's right.
Exactly.
How do we re...
Now, we do have to address the five billion as well.
Well, I understand, I, I thought you were, okay, I got you.
But the four million, I, I just would, I, I just think it's a way that we could repay the county for advancing those, the loss of those funds.
I see what you're saying. Answer that question, I'll ask mine.
So, it, it, that's possible.
It, and we certainly can model it out, now, there's no problem, I, I mean, I guess it's just a question of implementing it in the agreement and tracking it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, big word is agreement. Mr. Chairman, I got a question about, get back to the Edgewood thing. We're, the five-twenty-seven, so is this something that the county gets from the federal government? Or is this something that we just, that was just, that was the point that was on...
It was a clawback, it was basically a clawback from their funding for Edgewood.
When they were on Jefferson, or whatever, East Street Jefferson, okay.
Right, because when the, supposedly the new ru- wing was to be built, there was cost savings that were identified, uh, through that new wing and, and through not using the existing Edgewood School, and the cost savings identified were the five-twenty-seven.
But they are at Meadow Lane.
No, some of them are.
That's where, that's where it gets into the complicated mess of mess.
So there's no Edgewood students at Meadow Lane School today?
There is.
Well, whatever.
There is, yeah, there is.
You just said that they're not.
But...
So which one?
But there's still some at Edgewood.
Well, there's still some at Edgewood.
I thought we had closed it, I thought they closed the Edgewood School down.
No.
They have not.
No.
It's, again, it's a complicated...
Never mind, just ignore my question then.
It got more complicated.
Okay, never mind.
Making my head work.
If I could address that just a bit, because I think all the commissioners need to be aware of this, and that is that, to start off with, Edgewood School came about, and it was basically a nonprofit. It was a nonprofit when they started it. They came to the county, and the county, back years ago, agreed that they would contribute five-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars for the operation of Edgewood. Then came a, a, a time when we were trying to build new facilities on the schools, but we had to find revenues. And the negotiations with the school system was that they would give up the five-twenty-seven on Edgewood that the county was giving them, and we could use those dollars to pay, to repay the debt on Edgewood.
As far as the wing part.
Now, that is as far as it goes, because the control of the operation of the schools is the school board, they control that. They just agreed that they could, they would give up the five-twenty-seven, we could use it for funding of debt. How they operate the schools is their domain, not ours.
But you just said that they, um, to repay the debt on Edgewood, I mean...
On Meadow Lane.
Okay, on Meadow Lane, okay.
Now, now, they decided to continue operating Edgewood. I don't know, I mean, but they did, that's them, that's, that is on them. They had already given up the funding of the five-twenty-seven. So we can control what the school board does and how they operate the schools. We can only try to provide the facilities and the debt financing for that. And part of that was the five-twenty-seven that was obligated to give back to the county so that we could use it to repay debt. I know it's complicated.
Let me throw one thing in, while you're thinking. Keep in mind now, they also, the Edgewood School, they lost a lot of federal money, correct? They lost a lot of federal money. We won't go into detail why, but they lost a lot of federal money, so that, that, that plays into it too now.
It does.
So, my question is, I'm, I'm a little confused, but where is the school supposed to get the money, system to pay us back from the lottery? From the lottery, if we advance that for four million that, that Commissioner Doctor was talking about, where are there, where is the money going to come back from them?
The agreement that, that we had was that the lottery funding that would come in, which is supposed to be, you know, for just this cap, school capital construction, we committed that to debt service uh, for Edge, or, or Meadow Lane and Grantham and Grantham Middle School, Spring Creek, am I missing one? So we, we committed that, and that was an agreement we had with the school board, is that, hey, if we do these new schools, we're committing, uh, the lottery funds to debt service. So now that we are doing the school-based needs, we will be giving up the million-two that we get annually, that we have been paying for lottery, or, or for debt service. Now we have given that up, and now we've got to replace that million-two on debt service moving forward.
Okay, so that's for the Fremont.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so my, my question is, where is that million-two replacement going to come from?
That's what we're, uh...
I mean, I mean, that's, that's the gist of it, that's what I'm trying to figure out, I mean, we're saying that they're going to pay us back, or this, that, or where.
There, there was an agreement. Yeah, that is very confusing, I'm, I'm confused somewhat myself sometimes. Like, the, the five-twenty-seven from Edgewood, as, it, that whole Edgewood discussion changed over time. They, there was funding, there was lots of funding, there was a wing not built. It is, um, that's what we're, we're, but there was an agreement that they were to, to give up five-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars from their normal allocation so the county could pay debt service for, uh, uh, Meadow Lane.
Let me, maybe I can jump in.
Yeah.
Mr. Foster, um, the thought is that if you look on, in this model, if you're still on page thirteen, column M is in Michael, you see that that goes positive again, starting in twenty-six, a million-two forty-three?
Twenty-six.
Under column M.
Okay, got you.
See that?
Yes.
And so, that's, that's because in that year, you've got to look at column F, which is the debt service. It's only seven-point-three million, whereas column L is eight-and-a-half million. So we get to a point when the lottery money gets restored after it's been, um, held back, where the dollars available in column L are greater than the debt payments due in F, and so there's a surplus in M as in Michael. So that's where, over the course of two to three years, you could regain the four million that you fronted them in column K. Now, what that means is, it, 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 it's not good or bad, it just means that this model will not accommodate future school projects as readily as it might otherwise.
And that was going to be my next question, I mean, if we're getting that money back, then any project going forward, that money won't be a failure for.
Will have that much more of an impact, if those dollars aren't kept within the model. Again, that's not good or bad, it's just a decision you all will make
Yes.
about whether you want that repayment for the four million.
Yeah, I think some of, some of my questions were answered, Mr. Chair. I think some of the questions I was in, I, I was concerned about was how, how was the board spending lottery funds? Um, I see they were allocated to these other schools. My concern is, you just stated, future projects. Brogdon Middle School, um, Goldsboro High School, I don't know if that's been part of a master plan for, um, building, renovating, or building brand-new schools, I know they in need of that. So, um, you know, I'm just concerned, like, you know, we're, we're giving up these resources, it seems like we're still going to be paying the bulk of that fifteen-million-dollar grant. And, um, I know there's a need there, but we have to figure out something, um, for the other schools as well. So...
Mr. Chairman, basically, that fifteen-million-dollar grant's a nine-million-dollar grant?
Yes.
Right.
Fifteen million minus six equals nine, okay. Let me ask you a question on that, just to make sure I understand on the, um, back to the Edgewood deal. So the county, with this five-twenty-seven, and I don't really know exactly how that number come about, but anyway, just five-twenty-seven, it was there for the additional funds needed for the building, or additional funds needed for the students?
It was in the card expense. And they said that, that when they moved and closed Edgewood and moved it out to Meadow Lane, that they wouldn't need that expense.
Okay, so that come from, that was there, okay. Uh, I, I, the reason I'm asking, or the reason I'm making a statement about that. I mean, there's students that are at Meadow Lane, because my wife works there, and if we need, I mean, if, uh... They need, I mean, they actually need additional funding because of, some of the students need more um, help, I guess you'd say, than others. And I just, I just trying to make sure that this number that we've got here, that we're talking about, that's out, that's not, that's not going to that part, I, it's going, but you said that the school system said that we didn't need it because of the move.
Then they didn't move.
Okay, well, that's, okay, got it. All right, thank you. I reiterate, the agreement was made, we borrowed money in good faith using the five-twenty-seven. And I am simply wanting to hold the school system to that agreement. So the five-twenty-seven has already been obligated for twenty years for payback. And I'm just saying, we can't restore it, you can't spend it twice, you can't give them the five-twenty-seven and also pay debt. So let's hold them to the agreement of the five-twenty-seven. Thank you.
Sorry for somebody's just getting... No, that's, and listen, this is a, it's a lot of history here, and I know it's not always a simple concept, so I think it's good discussion, I I feel we messed up your public hearing.
So basically, we're talking about...
I'm happy to step back for a minute if you need to move to an agenda item and come back.
So that five-twenty-seven basically is, turns into ten million dollars, is what you're seeing?
The fi- the five-twenty-seven was?
Turns into ten million?
No, I said ten...
Over a ten-year period?
Over twenty-year period.
You just said it was twenty years. There was no end date on, on the five-twenty-seven.
I thought you said twenty years, okay.
No. Well, there was a, there was a loan on Meadow Lane for twenty years, so that's the reason I said twenty.
That's right, the loan that was taken out at the time this was all being discussed was a twenty-year loan, but I'm not aware that the five-twenty-seven was tied to the loan maturity, or there was another sunset.
Is it anything?
Okay, it's, I'm just going to go up, we'll see it, no, I'm sorry.
How much more discussion have we got on, on this? Because we are running an hour behind on that public hearing, I mean...
Um, I can be done in just a couple of minutes, but...
You, you can, but you don't, well, we can. Mr. Chairman, since, if, we are learning a lot today. Is there any way possible we could suspend this, have the public hearing, and then bring him back up? Because I think we've got some parties here.
I mean, because we've got people waiting, and they've been waiting for hours, you know, out of courtesy.
That's fine, no, no problem.
All right, we're going to come back to this.
And you were going to do this in 15 minutes.
He forgot he was in Wayne County. Okay, uh, and we do apologize for this, uh, being an hour late, but, uh, we're going to open a public hearing to receive public comment on a proposed amendment to the Wayne County zoning map by rezoning 13.65 acres from residential agricultural 30, RA 30, to light industry. The property is located in Brogdon Township on the east side of US 117 Alderman, approximately one-quarter of a mile south of US Highway 17 in Dudley, North Carolina, and is listed in the Wayne County Tax Office as parcel number 2587800769. Uh, this public hearing is now open.
Greg.
All right, thank you. The, uh, this property, as mentioned, the request is from RA 30 to light industry. Originally, uh, this property was zoned light industry up until about 2017, when the property owner at the time requested, or a buyer, they had a buyer for the property, actually, who was interested in doing, uh, building a house or home, so they rezoned it back to, or down to RA 30. That never took place, so the property owner, uh, currently wants to rezonate back to what it was originally, which is light industry. They do have interest in, uh, putting a business on site. Uh, we have sent this to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, uh, to get their comments. Their comments came back that they have no issues with compatibility, so there are no compatibility issues with the base. We have, since this is a public hearing, we have notified all the adjacent property owners. We have posted the property with a sign and we have advertised in the newspaper, um, twice, um, as required by law. Our planning board has reviewed this request and does recommend approval. Um, I do believe the applicant is present in the audience as well. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions, Mr. Gray? Does anyone in the audience have any comments that they would like to make?
No one signed up for the public hearing, ma'am.
Okay. Can we act on this now?
I want you to close the public hearing.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion that we close the public hearing, or can I just close?
Just close it.
All right, uh, this public hearing is now closed. The board can take action.
I make a motion that we approve the zoning requests, um, 13.65 acres from residential agriculture 30, RA 30 to light industry. And the parcel number is 2587800769.
I have a motion on the floor, any other discussion? No other discussion, all in favor, show a sign in the right hand. Motion carries, this is rezoned.
Greg.
Yes, sir.
Go and bite to Mr. Datto to the Davenport report. That 527.
Yes, sir.
Is it real or just an imaginary number? Because what, what I got out of it is, was exactly what is the current number. So, who, who do you talk to to dispute your number?
And it's, and it depends on who you talk to, what day.
Exactly.
Can I provide some perspective on that, if you don't mind?
Yes, ma'am, please do.
Um, so, the 527, we paid them, we paid them $587,000 a year for operation, as part of their current expense operations, um, up until we had this agreement whenever Meadow Lane was going to be built. And, and so, I think what Mr. Honeycutt is saying, we're not sure where the number, $527,000, came from. Um, we've actually looked for documentation to provide backup on what savings that represented, but we were all in those meetings in, you know, party to the agreement where that's the number that was agreed upon. So, that is, when he says it depends on which, who you ask, the 527,000, we're really not sure what made that, that number up. But it is something that the schools agreed to, um.
I thought it was the appropriation amount that we gave them every year.
We gave them 587, so they said that we would, we would still give them some, but not the full amount, that they wouldn't need the full amount.
Okay, now, now, my question is, is that a real number? Are we actually receiving those funds?
My argument on this would be, yes, it is a real number, it is a recognized number.
It is county dollars.
It is specifically county dollars.
Right, it was a line item in our budget, and that is a line item that is no longer there. So, in my opinion, it is reckon, it is a realized number.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
But, but part of the, the issue, I think it's been, as, as we've discussed, is they're still operating Edgewood. And they're still, you know, and if you listen to the school system, is, it's a mess.
They were going to save the money by moving all of the students to Edgewood, and there was so much pushback. The ones that agreed to move, they moved, but the ones that didn't want to move, they kept them, so. What we were, what we were told did not happen. I mean, because the initial plan was to move all of the Edgewood students to New Wayne at Meadow Lane. And, and as, as has been said, we do not govern the school system. We fund it, but, but we can't tell them what schools to open and what schools to close.
And there was supposed to be some shared facilities because of this move, so that's where some of the savings were going to result. I, I don't have an itemized breakdown, but there was supposed to be some shared facilities, like the cafeteria, maybe the playground, um, libraries, things like that, that were, were, you know, kind of operated separately before, and now they were going to be joined. And so, that was, that was where the idea came from, that there would be projected savings.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I also think that we're going to put it back in the budget in 2022, on this, according to this chart here?
No, what that represents is that it would be, that savings from not paying that to them because it's been taken out of our budget would be used to pay the debt service.
Would be right.
Do you have to put it back in the budget, though? You going to use it?
It, it, it'd basically just be a clawback from the school system of what they're getting now.
It would be set aside for debt service instead of set aside for, um, current expense for Wayne County, that's right. For public schools, I'm sorry.
So, it would have been accumulated total, so just 527, that's what we're saying.
On an annual basis, we, we, what probably, and Allison, correct me if I'm wrong, the simplest thing to do is whatever their operational expense would be, you clawback 527 and you put that to debt service.
Right, so, the, the, we would normally have a line item appropriation for 587, so, next year, we will have a line item appropriation for 527 for debt service, but it will not be in the schools' fund, it would be in the county fund for us to pay that debt.
Okay, that makes sense.
So, it sounds like we got a communication issue. You're putting it mildly.
Well, I mean, you know, just. Okay. Hold them to the agreement and everything's good. Let's move on.
Mr. Horst. I think we need to have this, uh, on a side issue, maybe we all get together and discuss it. In the meantime, we just move on with the report.
Okay, we all good with that?
What's that?
Moving on, Rupert, report.
Oh, yeah.
Page 14.
Okay, um, so, I think that was page 13. We know there's some things to continue to look at there, concepts to discuss about where the dollars in column K come from, may be reimbursed at a later date, and as I said at the beginning of the meeting, you know, we're just focused on two projects right now, and there are others out there, I know, that are being discussed that we ultimately need to pull in. I do want to talk about the potential DSS and health. Oh, I see.
I zoomed out, so that, I mean, zoomed in so that you can see.
Okay, perfect, so I'm on page 14. This is a potential proposed DSS and health facility. We have run the debt associated with this two ways. The, the left-hand side of this page, under columns B, C, and D, are where the current market bond rate is for this type of debt that would be issued by Wayne County. Um, and on the right-hand side is more of a planning estimate. Now, the timing of this is that it could happen fairly quickly if it stays on track and everything is approved. So, I think the left-hand side is maybe a little bit more applicable. The long and short of it is, um, we are setting up a borrowing for this to give the county about $23 million for the project. That's the estimate that we're working with right now on project cost, 23 million. Down at the very bottom of that page in the blue, you'll see current market for a Wayne County limited obligation bond, which is the type of debt that would be done. Remember, as a county in North Carolina, if you want to issue general obligation bonds, it has to go to a countywide referendum. But you have other types of debt that you can issue without a referendum, requires public hearings and things like that, and we typically call those limited obligation bonds, where that debt would be secured by a mortgage on the facility. So, just, you know, and, and it would be appropriated, the debt service every year would be appropriated by you all as part of the budget process. And so, we're under 2% today for a borrowing like that. And you'll see, under column D as in David, that's the current market estimate, principal plus interest. It starts out at about $1,007,000 a year, and then it steps down over time. That is a, a structure of repayment that the local government commission feels pretty strongly about. It, it's called level principal, so the principal payments every year are the same, and what that means is the interest payment starts higher and goes lower year by year. So, it starts at $1,007,000 and it steps down over the 20-year period to about $1 million per year of debt service. On our planning rate, over in column G, we're using a 4.5% rate. Again, if this were a project that were a year and a half, two, three years out, the planning rate might be more applicable here. But if it's truly in the near term, I think we're, you know, we're somewhere in between these two rates, current market and planning, okay?
So, are you anticipating interest rates to raise, be raised, uh, to that level over the next couple of years?
I just think there's unknowns when you get out, you know, out certainly beyond 12 months, just, you know, good news, bad news, um, all of those things can influence rates, and, and so, generally, when we're doing longer-term planning and we get out beyond a year or two, we, we tend to be more comfortable using a higher planning rate, but, um, clearly, today, it's, you know, it's, the current market is about half or le, more than half of what our planning rate might be.
Very favorable to borrow money today.
That's right, very favorable, and so, columns B, C, and D are really the, the, um, the scenario, I think, that's most relevant for this discussion, assuming that this is a relatively near-term project, okay? If you were to do that debt on page 14, we went back and we re-analyzed your three debt policies and three debt ratios. And so, in all three ratio cases, we are in compliance. So, if you were to issue 23 million this coming year, or this spring, you can still demonstrate compliance with your policy. So, that upper-left chart, those green bars, we want them above the red line, and they are. And on the other two, we want the bars below the red line, and they are. So, you are, you're in compliance, and I, I would generally say this is reasonable from a debt capacity perspective. I mean, the, the county has debt capacity. To go out and issue debt for whatever the purpose is, school, non-school, if that is the will of the board, doesn't necessarily mean it's affordable, right? So, the capacity is there, we can demonstrate compliance with this project. Now, when we get into a discussion about a five-year CIP, if there's any other major projects included, you know, we'll, we'll need to watch these carefully, particularly that bottom one. Debt service to expenditures is likely to be the ratio that has more of the limiting factor, okay? And then finally, on page 16 is the last page, we've tried to pull this together for you all to talk about affordability. And we generally measure this in the number of pennies on the tax rate, I'm on page 16. A penny on the tax rate in the county currently generates about $860,000, okay? So, what you'll see on the right, excuse me, the left-hand side of the page, column B as in boy, is that annual contribution from the school model that was in the green box, column K from the school model. Remember that, that's the four million over the five years. Column C is the debt service for the $23 million DSS health building under current market estimates. We just talked about that on the prior page. Column D as in dog is just adding B plus C. So, between the school model, where you lose the lottery money, and you have to come up with some additional dollars to backfill, plus the debt service on the DSS health under current market estimates, what you'll see, we're, we're taking column D and we're taking the value of a penny on your tax rate under column E as in Edward, and F is the number of pennies needed in any given year to cover the, both of those needs. The annual school contribution, the DSS health service, you can see in column F, it's going to range somewhere between a penny as high as three and a quarter, three and a half pennies, depending on how the value of your penny grows. We're assuming, and that's a, that's a function of your tax base, right? As your tax base grows, every penny on the tax rate is generating more revenue. We are assuming that the revenue derived from each penny on your rate is growing at about 1.25%. And I think you've got some good history that demonstrates that's a, a reasonable assumption for growth. So, a penny today is worth $860,000, next year it's $870,000, and so on down the line there. And it's just very simple division, taking column D and dividing it by the value of the penny in E, and F is an order of magnitude of what, of the equivalent dollars you need to come up with to make these things work, whether it's an actual tax adjustment, or you find those dollars somewhere else in the budget or some combination. And then, in the green bar below that, on top of all of that, the 5 million cash contribution for the activating the grant.
And Mr. Chairman, if I might, also, in regards to the DSS Health Department debt, we would need to get a, an estimate from DSS on how much reimbursement the state would give us if we build a new building, because a portion of that building, we do get a reimbursement on DSS, we do not get anything from the Health Department. So, uh, I, I don't know what those numbers are, but they will participate with us on the state level on a dollar amount on an annual basis, which we could use, again, for retirement debt.
Yeah, we've not included any of that, so as, as my understanding, some component of that facility related to DSS would be eligible for some state reimbursement, but we've not tried to calculate that at this point.
It would be based on the square footage used for DSS versus, uh, the Health Department, and I think it's over a 20-year period.
I think it's a minimum 20 years. They say sometimes up to 60%, I think the more realistic number is probably up to 50%. But even at that point, it is subject to, um, whether we have used our maximum funding out of those pots of money that they do those reimbursements from. It is a ve, I mean, I'll be honest, it was a very complicated, um, calculation, it's a little bit hard to project. But, we could certainly, you know, if the time were to come, get with a state liaison and see if we could have somebody help us estimate that number.
Well, and if I might add, since we're, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, we, I was led to believe that we had to renovate an existing building in order to get the reimbursement from DSS. But we have verified with the state that they'll also, on a new construction, would in actually, uh, contribute a portion of those dollars. actually contribute a portion of those dollars. And that's going to be key to try to find some of those dollars, revenue sources outside of Wayne County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I got, and I may have missed it, or it might not be included, but I've heard discussion about the jail, and it's not in this either. I mean, is that something that we, I mean?
Yeah, absolutely, it is not. So as I said, we've just, for the time being, included these two projects. So as you all get your legs under you on the capital improvement plan, the CIP, I think that's where we would propose to bring in these other projects, whatever amounts and years might, they might be, and rework this so you see, I guess, what I call the bigger picture.
Mr. Chairman, have you got any idea what kind of money the jail would be? While the chair might answer that.
I don't know much of anything about the project.
I mean, is that 2?
Or did I hear 2 million, just to get this one before it would pass?
Yes, sir, approximately $2 million just repairing us for, to get.
Come on up, just speak.
To get the intercoms and the doors and the plumbing working again. We had a pipe break last night and flooded our floor again in the jail, so flooded our offices, because the jail, of course, is above us in our office. So it's, right now, it's critical that we do something to come into compliance, the intercoms, another situation that we don't know how we're going to get the wires from floor to floor to repair that. But IT's working on that, but it's going to be a little bit of expense there. Cameras are failing.
Okay, I may, I may have missed a vote on this. Oh, we, we had talked about, or we, I keep saying we, I've been here, come to the meetings, y'all had talked about in the past about constructing another jail. I mean, is there, I mean, is there any numbers associated with that?
I don't think we've gone that far yet, but I think for a discussion, and correct me, Craig, if I'm wrong, Mr. Parker, there was a discussion, do we spend on this jail, or do we build new? And I don't think a decision has been made. But I think, you know, my understanding is the jail inspector has been very lenient with us, but he can't, or he or she or whoever, they can't be lenient for so long. I mean, we're at, we're getting close to a point, but something's going to have to be done.
Well, let me, Mr. Chairman, let me ask a question. What's the maintenance on that jail in a year's time? I mean, just, I mean, the way it sounds, it sounds like it's a fairly large number.
I can't answer that specifically, because Kendall is.
We can try to get you that number.
The reason I'm asking, I mean, it comes to a point in time, if you're paying maintenance costs more than what you would cost to pay for a building, I mean, it, I mean, it kind of, it don't make sense to keep trying to patch. I mean, I'm just asking.
And that's one of the things, we have a, we've done a facility, look at it with Mosley Architect that we do have, and we were waiting to get the new facilities committee that will be appointed by the chair to sit down and go over that and talk about options. But as the chair said, we've got some immediate needs that may be coming up, and the question is, do you throw good money after bad?
You've got to do a certain amount to keep it functioning.
Right. But it is my understanding that Mosley is, in fact, doing a study in regards to the new jail. We have not got any of that report back as yet. Is that correct?
We do have some figures that are being compiled right now. It's going to be a choice of how much of jail versus office space the building committee would like to look at doing, because the initial project was to build offices and the jail and do away with this facility, or remodel it for some other use. So I'm not sure exactly what phase they're in at this point, because it'll be up to the building committee, your facilities committee, I guess, to.
And it may be that we have to break it in two sections, that we actually build the jail and then later build the office complex. But I do know that they are in the process of getting a report back. We just have not received it.
Right. And once the chair sets up the facilities committee, we will set up a meeting probably after the first of the year and delve into that.
And, you know, since that's been brought up, you know, there's not much going to be going on far as meetings or anything. I will have that list completed, and our clerk will have that list compiled and put together for our first meeting in January.
Seems like we got a little off track, like, that's not in our discussion materials now, but that's something that we have to look at future. So, I mean, I'm just trying to keep us on track here a little bit, because it seems like we got off on a jail, which is not in our discussion, and right now, we're trying to get through this discussion.
Well, I'm just, I was just asking, is I know it's on the capital projects list down the road, so, I mean, I'm just trying to force dollar figures, what we got to spend, knowing based on what we're going to talk about.
Right now, we're not addressing that today. We don't need to address it right now, today. So moving forward, we'll address it when it's time to do, and the sheriff has his numbers, and county manager has his numbers, we can discuss it then. It's no, it's almost zero point to discuss it right now.
Thank you. So at any rate, that concludes the material. As we said, I think there may be a desire to revisit the broader CIP as you all move forward with your committee. And again, I think, for particularly those of you that are new to this, I do believe the counties manage their debt effectively and well over the years. You do have debt capacity, and you have some debt affordability, but I think the affordability, where does the money come from in the budget, is going to be the part of all of this that you probably will have to spend a little more time with, or we will have to spend a little more time with as the process moves forward.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
May I? In regard to Davenport, what are you, what are you, what are you doing for the county? Are you doing auditing? Are you doing bookkeeping? What are you doing?
Yeah, so I appreciate that. So, and sometimes it's easier to explain what we do by telling you what we're not. We're not auditors, and we're not attorneys or engineers. We focus our efforts primarily on capital planning, so the things that we've talked about here, and financing activities. So when the county needs to go and borrow money for a project, that tends to be the scope of most of the work that we do. From time to time, provide some insights on some of the investment activities of the county, but the bulk of the work is capital planning, policies, primarily related to debt, less so on the operating side of your budget.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I might, I kind of take this as a reference, of course, for me, as well as kind of explaining what's transpired over the last eight years. Without Davenport's help, we would not be able to do the tremendous improvements that we have made in facilities here in Wayne County, as well as the schools, and at the same time, using a very ingenious way of having the revenue streams necessary to retire that debt without raising taxes. Now, I want everybody to recognize, during the eight years, we had reduced taxes and kept that lower tax rate for eight years, and at the same time, did the new schools, did the new jail, did these new facilities, the Maxwell Center, and were able to have the revenue to repay that debt, thanks to Davenport, because you all really have helped us structure the repayment in such a way that we didn't have to raise taxes. But I think your magic has just about wore out. I think we have, in fact, used all of those available sources, but that was a reason why I brought up the fact of maybe using year '26 and '27, those revenues to restore the $4 million. It's, it's, things like that have really helped us.
Well, I appreciate it. We had a lot of good material to work with. And, yeah, I think, you know, as you get more and more debt on the books and budgets become more strained, you know, the resources are more precious. But I think, hopefully, we bring some perspective, not only on how you get something done year by year when you need to do it, but there's a plan for multiple years that we have to revisit and adjust, but I think the planning process in and of itself is, is a good process.
Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the layout, because it kind of gives me a perspective on kind of what we've got, what we're obligated for, because past boards have obligated things that we've got to pay for in the next X amount of years, and showing us the revenue based on projections, and capital outlay is one of the biggest, you know, biggest things that will be part of our budget. Thanks, sir.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to pass, Mr. Cole? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next up, 15 minutes. I know. I'm sorry, I probably stretched that. But I think everybody kind of gave the grandeur of the problem.
This was needed, especially for the newer board members, I mean.
And that's.
See what we're facing.
Yes, sir, and that's the reason, and I think the discussion of facilities, discussion of debt, especially because we are going to start the CIP season beginning January.
That's right.
So we needed to give you a base level of understanding, but also a discussion of what the needs are out there. And the needs out there, like I said, we haven't even discussed schools. So that's coming, I don't know if it's going to be from a new superintendent or not, but that's coming. So, so, so when we start talking budget, this is just ours, you know, and the millions and millions of dollars, probably the school system on capitals, will be on top of that.
And let's go lead the community college out. I mean, you know, we have to fund the buildings and maintenance at the college also, so, I mean, it's.
There will be an ask.
As I said, when we opened the meeting, we've got, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of work ahead of us.
There will be an ask from the community college as well, so.
Mr. Tony Cuddy, has the LGC approved the two projects we have here? Have they approved those yet?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. This is just a discussion right now. We haven't gone into any debt, any additional debt. The last debt that we went into, we borrowed $10 million back in.
September.
September, which was for the radio towers, which was for the 911 Joe Gurley Building, and the soft, computer software for finance.
And some board of elections.
And board of elections, yes. So, and again, that debt service will hit us in next year's budget in August, of $777,000 in new debt. So, and I will preach that.
Okay, we're ready for a report from the Health Department?
Yes, yes, sir. We did want to have, since we, there was some discussion with respect to maybe a new consolidated Health and DSS building. I think Brenda made a presentation to the Health Board with respect to some of the revenue streams that she's missing on, and how maybe a new building could help as well. So that's the reason why we want to have Brenda here, just to give you an update on some of the issues that they're facing with respect to the Health Department. So Brenda, thanks for being here.
Do I have to answer this by myself? Why do I have to answer this by myself? You're welcome to take control right there.
The mouse.
First of all, thank you for letting me be here today. I wish that my presentation were a little more cheery, especially in this holiday time, but it's not. And I've been here just about six months, and people who know me call me analytical. I recently completed my MBA, and I'm very big on looking at trends, looking at data, seeing where we are, where have we been, and where do we need to go. So I have been very exhaustive in my research since I got here, and I wanted to share with you some of the findings. I have shared them with my board chair and one or two board members, and it was suggested that I share it with you today, so I'm going to do that. Okay. So my department, unlike most county departments, I'd say I'm probably the only county department that operates like a nonprofit. I only receive 28% of my revenue from the county. I am responsible for raising my own revenue. So I do that by, ew, that font is kind of funky up there, but anyway, the blue section of that is my Medicaid services. So this is my kind of bread and butter. These are family planning, maternal health, women, infant, and children. We serve the very underserved in our county, that is our mission. And when I generate those services, I can bill Medicaid, because we have a fair number of Medicaid recipients here, for those services, and I can get reimbursed. So that's 30% of my budget. That's what that should say, but I don't know what happened to the slide. I can also raise grants, state and federal grants, of which 24% of my budget. I have to compete for those a lot of times, or sometimes they're set aside, but I have to get grants. And then, if the county appropriation of 28% doesn't cover my budget, I have to borrow from myself, which is my fund balance. So this is my last budget as of right now through June 30th. So right about, I started right at the beginning of June, so this is right at the end. I borrowed 18%. Now, as a note, county appropriations across the state range from 35% for the most rural small counties, to 70% for things like Wake and Durham. So we are in the middle of that range, but we're at 28%. So right there, we're already like, oh, no, I'm, you know, I'm sort of not out of the gate yet. This graph matches the color scheme with the pie chart. So what I'm trying to tell you, if you look at the blue bars, that's the amount of revenue the Health Department has generated for the last six years. If you look at the very far right blue bar, that is just about when I got here. So this is what I inherited. I inherited a department that is generating less and less revenue, and if you look at the yellow bars, I'm borrowing more and more and more from my fund balance for the last six years. Those lines have now begun to intersect, so this is not a positive place to be from a fiscal standpoint. Just for reference, the far left bar, the yellow one, was about $800,000 that we borrowed from ourselves. Last year, we borrowed 1.5 million. So my fund balance right now is about $4 million. So it is getting depleted every single year and not being replenished. So how are we doing? So how has COVID affected us? It's affected us really badly. So what I did is I did an analysis, I have data from the state, all my data is from the state, by the way. Of the five nearest counties to us, in no particular order, Wilson, Duplin, Lenore, Johnston, and Sampson. And what this represents is the number of patients over the population. So this is the percent of the community that I serve, and we are the lowest in our area. We have about 625 patients that we serve in the Health Department out of 123,000 residents. So we are the lowest in the, in the area, and in fact, I'm sorry to say, we're the lowest in the state, the very lowest in the state for per capita services to our community.
What were those numbers again, 625?
Yeah, it was our new patients for this period, which is hard hit by COVID, but I looked for the last two years prior, because these data for two years I have, every quarter, it's pretty much the same trend. I would say now we're the lowest, the lowest, lowest, where we probably were the lowest 10%, and now we're the lowest, lowest. So if you look at the number of services per population, so you might have some clients come in, and you can give them a whole lot of services, so you can get more out of them, right? So you can bill more for them, make that Medicaid dollars back. But we haven't even been able to do that, really. So we're still the lowest in the region, and we're a little bit better across the state, but not that whole lot better. So where does our money come from when we get these clients in? I serve the underserved, I serve the Medicaid population predominantly, and that is my predominant revenue stream. However, we have a lot of out-of-pocket payers, 44%, it's really, really high. They're eligible for insurance, a lot of them, they're not insured, so they're paying out of pocket, so guess what? They're not buying a lot of healthcare. And in fact, they could get a whole lot more healthcare if I could get them insured. I don't have insurance enrollment in my office, it's in DSS, and historically, there's relationships there, and that's one of my goals, to increase the insured population. But if you look at these numbers, if you look at that top left box, if I don't have people coming in the clinic, right, and if when they do come in, they're not insured, how do I get blood from that rock? I cannot. I cannot get blood from that rock, right? There's no way for me to make up those two divergent curves in the first slide, because I'm kind of stuck here. And I know it was trending down before I got here, but COVID has really shown a light on some of the deficiencies of the investment in public health. And I'm sorry to say that, because I'm very emotional about this, and it's a very hard presentation to do, but I have to tell the story, so I'll, I'll try to keep my exposure to this. So COVID hit. So like every health department, we are required, mandated, not allowed to go, no, we're not going to do that thing. We are mandated for every infectious disease, not just COVID, tuberculosis, pertussis, name it, anything, to do case investigations, contact tracing, and, and report and analyze disease outbreaks and clusters. Required. Right now, we have over 6,000 cases, of positive cases. That is 5% of our population that has been affected. Our positivity rate unfortunately is close to 10% right now. That's the number of positive over the number of what we have tested. It's very, very high, and it is not going down. If you look at the curve, there's where we are. The cases just keep going up. My active caseload is 570 people a day. They have to be contacted. They have to be checked in on. They have to see how they're doing. 572 a day, okay? My average number of new positives that adds to that pool is 30. And that doesn't even include the testing. That little box up there with our testing, that's just stuff we decided to do because it was good for the community, and we wanted to give our community access to testing. But it's not on this list of requirements. So where are we? This is where the rubber meets the road for us. From March to today, I burn 820 hours a month on COVID-related activities. I lose both revenue from services and salaries and wages. Remember, the employees who are doing COVID aren't doing services that I get, I can bill for. I can bill for a little bit of testing, but it's very, very tiny. It's like $23 a test. It doesn't even cover the salaries and wages of the nurses and the medical director and myself, manning the tests I have twice a week, which I do. I do over 300 tests a week, and I personally oversee the operations, because I don't want to use my precious nurses, because they should be doing Medicaid services. So I go out there with the medical director. We do it together. Eighty-five thousand a month. That's what I burn. My total losses since March have been over $850,000. So people say, wow, but you get all these grants from the state, right? I do. I do. I get some money from the state. The box on the right, the, the orange, uh, the green box, from January, remember, this is through June of 2021, not the end of the year, not December. This is through June. They will have given me $550,000. And that's to cover all the testing, like all those salaries and wages while I'm testing. PPE, we blow through PPE when we're doing the testing, when clients come in. We have a lot of clients come in without a mask. Here's your mask. Here's your sanitizer. Here's the thermometer. We do all of that with this money. Salaries and wages, and then my medical director, Dr. Stackhouse, is invaluable. I could never, ever do these efforts without Jim Stackhouse. And I had to double his contract. Very first thing I did here, the first week, was double his contract, because I came in at the very beginning of COVID, right about the beginning of June, and we were just hitting, hitting the ground running. And I looked around and I said, I need some help. So I doubled his contract, and thank God I did, because he's invaluable to this county. A lot of you know him. He has been in primary practice here for many, many, many years. He's wonderful. So where are we now? So we have vaccinations starting, and we, as local health, are required by the state, required to serve our county employees, county members, and all the congregate settings. We're in partnership with Wayne, UNC, and Goshen, but they want to cover their own people. I'm responsible for covering everybody. That means everybody. The state has not given me any additional money, and it's on top of testing. So we'll be doing testing, and now we're going to do vaccination. Okay, so what has that led to? My staff are resigning. I had two senior people resign last week, and I had one the week before. I'm, they're leaving. They've had enough. They're tired. Other counties, we sit on county health department calls across the state, and half those counties are getting hazard paid. My guys are leaving, because they're burned out, and they feel underappreciated. They're burned out. The toll is not really sustainable. So I'm here today because I, I'm new, right? I'm just a new guy. But I don't see where the workaround is here. I can't, so if I do this next one, there's my building, and I invite anyone to come by. Anyone. Have a good rainstorm, you get a lot of leaking walls. I have mold. I have rats. It smells. I have cramped spaces. I cannot social distance. People come once, they don't ever come back. It's disgusting. Come on by. I invite you. Let's do a little site visit to my facility. It's disgusting. People complain about it. They don't want to go there for services. So even if COVID were over, I think that's why the two curves are converging. It's, there's not really workaround. The staff morale and mental health, it's bad. I've had many, many people come to me saying, I don't want to work here anymore. We don't pay that well compared to other counties. And that's, the five counties around us that I have friends with, they pay more. So my staff go, and they work in other counties. The building's nicer, less stress, and they get paid more. I can't even like compete with that. I can't say, sure, stay with me. I'm a nice person, because they're like taking care of themselves. It's very difficult to qual, to recruit qualified people. I had two very senior positions open recently and had very few applications. They come by the building, they come for an interview, they look at the salary, and they say, no way. And I look at the county appropriation, they're like, no way. I'm not going to do this. So I, again, I don't know the workaround. That's why I'm here. This is Onslow County. It's a consolidated health and human services. It's lovely. It costs about $23 million to build. And they have fewer nurse practitioners than I do. They have one nurse practitioner. Those are providers. I have three with one vacancy. I could have four. And they still have double the services I have, double. Although I have four providers and they have one. So something's wrong here, right? If we were to get a new building, we would be able to attract new clients. We'd be able to keep new clients. There's a lot of services outside of maternal health and family planning, which is really our bread and butter. How about men's health? Right? How about Wayne's Women Clinic comes to us all the time and says, hey, we should do this pregnancy classes and all this group stuff. I can't do group stuff. I can't even, like I have tiny little rooms where one person can fit in during their consultation. You think the whole family's coming? No, they're not all coming. My clients now sit in the hallway in chairs and wait for their appointment. And my staff are like trying to get around them with the kids running in the hallway, like, excuse me, excuse me. There's nowhere to sit, even in wait. So there's no expansion of services happening anytime soon in that building, even after COVID is over. I think that the idea that you would invest in public health would really boost their morale and make them whole. They feel very passed over. And I would like to be able to attract some new qualified hire. My Director of Nursing and my new nursing supervisor have both resigned. My two key people, and my Director of Communityful Disease has planned, has told me she's planning to resign. Don't know where to go for that. I can't recruit anyone. So I know I'm being very emotional. I do care about this place. I'm not a quitter. I did not expect this when I got here. I want to stay for the long haul, but I really, really would like to see some, something change. Let's hope that.
Thank you. Any, any questions?
Yes, um, apologies. Um, this is to Craig, Craig, um, what could we do pertaining to the hazard pay for COVID-19 at this point? There's definitely a pandemic here. I think we've all been touched by either a family member or other, significant other that has been sick from COVID-19. We need healthcare providers. It's a necessity. It's not a want. So what can we do?
We, if, if the board would give a direction and say you would like to look at that, then that, we would come back with you with a plan. We, we did talk about hazard pay earlier, but one of the issues was, how far did you go with hazard pay? Because, you know, we have DSS workers that, that deal directly. We have, you know, people dealing direct services, they, you know, so, Sheriff's Department, detention officers. So it was, where did you make that break? And so, uh, we, at the time that the discussion came up, we did not have a, a, a good plan. And, and I think that this was very early on with the COVID funding, and we did not know how long the COVID, you know, this would last as well. So, uh, we did set it aside. But if it is a direction from the board, we, we can go back and revisit, look at what other counties are doing, and see how they're making those adjustments and changes.
So if I may, I think my biggest worry on finances is having to let staff go. I can borrow from myself this year, and there'll be a little bit left. I mean, Mr. Daughtry knows, there'll be a little bit left in my fund for next year, but not a lot of bit left. I can borrow from my son, but I may have to let people go if I can't cover their salaries and wages. So I would bet people want to keep their job as their highest priority. But even in the long term, I have to have something break, something has to give for next year and the year after, and the year after that. I can't, because the lines, as you know, even without COVID, they're crossing. So my revenue is less than my expenditures. So I think that if there were a choice that staff would make, they'd like to keep their job, number one, and they really would like a new building. And hazard pay is lovely. But our priorities here in this county are not the same as Wake County and Durham. They're funded, their health departments are 70% funded by the county. 14% of their revenue is services. 14! Oh, that's a no-brainer. I can do that in my sleep. I have to do at least 30, 35, right? And if I can't do it, I have to let people go.
Well, um, I'd like to make a motion that this board consider, um, um, working on some hazard pay, um, finding out from other counties what they are doing, and seeing if it's something that's feasible.
I can get you some data from other counties as well, because we have on our local health department calls, everyone shares their policies on hazard pay and how the structure is, so I probably have 10 or 12 examples from other counties, and I'm more than happy to share that with you.
That's great.
If that's helpful.
And my other question was, there was a motion, um, hopefully I could get it approved.
Counsel, uh, give us some guidance.
Under your policy, as I understand it, that since it's not something that's on the agenda, the whole, the majority of the board would have to agree that it could be added at this time.
What's the, we have a motion on the floor. What's the pleasure of the board? Any, any discussion? Well, Mr. Chairman, if I might, since it's out of order in that it's not on the agenda, I would ask that we table the motion until our next meeting, that we do in fact ask for the information to be given to us, but that we actually take the motion up or be placed on the agenda for the next, next, our next meeting. Anyone else?
I just have a discussion.
Mr. Foster?
Oh, I have a question, but it's not pertaining to that. I'm, I'm fine with his motion.
Yeah, well, let's, let's deal with this first.
Yeah, I just had a discussion pertaining to, um.
Would, would you mind withdrawing the motion and just adding it on the agenda for next?
Well, my, my concern is that, you know, this pandemic is, the numbers are not going down. And I don't think that we should wait, um, two weeks from now. As we all know that, um, we're going to be losing individuals daily up until, um, January, even February. So I, I mean, my, I think that it's something that we can start the process on, at least get into information in place. I don't think that we should wait another two weeks till our next meeting.
But I think, either way, we're going to have to wait on the information, correct? We're going to have to wait on the information.
Yeah, we're going to have to get some.
So we're, we're all in agreement that it's fine for her to get information and bring information back to us.
Sure.
We're just not in agreement right now as voting on the hazard pay until we have the information. So we can't get it right now anyway, so, I mean, I'm, I understand what Mr. Doctor's saying. I also understand what Councilor, Commissioner Williams was saying also.
Mr. Chair, I got a question.
Okay, so I remove that.
Mr. Gurley, go ahead.
So I, I remove my, my motion from the floor.
You, you removed?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Gurley.
I got a question. As far as the, when it, concerned the hazard pay, doesn't the COVID, wouldn't the COVID dollars to a point, um, that, that's pretty much what COVID money's for, isn't it?
It, it is, and, and that's an option.
I'm not just for that, but just, but I mean, but.
Yes, sir. And, and, you know, and, uh, just to clarify also something, that if she does have a shortfall in her budget, and she ran out of quote-unquote the fun bounce in the Health Department, the funding source would be the county. And, and so that, that would be, so, you know, before anybody would be laid off or fired. You know, that, that would come back to the county so that it, it's not, you know, once they run out of money, they would have to start letting off. They, they could come back to the county and to get additional fund balance for that. So, so we, you know, I just wanted to make sure that people understood that. Uh, the, the second, yes, sir, that, that's what, what I would recommend i- is that we look at, because we have EMS employees as well, that probably need to, if you were looking at hazard pay, there, there's a whole, you know, what scale and the cost associated with it. I, I would say it probably would take me a couple of weeks to, to get you the policy and break it down per department. I, I think the positive thing that the staff would understand and appreciate is that it was being looked at, uh, and that it was, was coming on the agenda for our January meeting. So, uh, and, and I, but we'll be more than happy to have that ready for, for the January 5th meeting.
Okay. I have one other question, Mr. Chair. Do, do we have any intentions, if we do, um, build a new facility, where that location would be? Would it be on the same grounds, or would it be somewhere else?
There was a, I, I suppose, there was a very, very extensive research done several years ago with the cost of maintaining the building I have now versus a new building. Where could it be? They had an RFA. They had all this work done that is out there, that was done three years ago? Mr. Daughtry, you think? Three years ago. Um, very, very extensive. And with the hopes that maybe that would be the right timing. So I can definitely, it might be a little old, but we can share that.
And Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could inject here.
Yes, sir.
I, I suppose this was one of those projects that, for some, whatever reason, kind of got shoved back and shoved back and shoved back. I think it was even six years ago that we actually hired an architect to come in and analyzed the building, uh, the Health DSS building, and for renovation. What our intention was, was to renovate that building. He came back, uh, the, the architectural firm came back and said, first, you have a number of problems. First problem is the cost. The cost of renovating this building will be over $25 million. Do you want to put $25 million in a structure that is 100 years old? Number two, you're going to have to find a, a place to relocate all of staff temporarily while you were doing the renovation. And we could not find a building anywhere in Wayne County that would accommodate the Health Department and the DSS. At that point, then, we looked at other options. We looked at renovations. The building that we acquired originally for advanced manufacturing, we decided that we could renovate that building and move DSS there. Health Department would have to stay where it's at. That estimate came in at $10 million to renovate that building. Well, if we spend $10 million on renovating that building that was built for industry, then we still had the Health Department to deal with, and that cost would run us 15, 18 million. So that was a $28 million effort, and we had a used building that we had renovated. So we finally came to the conclusion that we have messed around and messed around with this, and the best way to handle it would be actually to go out and look at other facilities. So we did. And we went to Onslow County, and that was the picture that was, uh, on the presentation. And Onslow County built a combined Health Department, DSS building that is top-notch. And they spent 20-some-odd million dollars on that particular building. So, so our thought was, since that building had actually already been constructed, we could actually see it, then we could actually go to a design build and build on the vacant property that the architect had originally estimated that we needed to build on, which is on Ash Street. And it is the, the, the parking lot. And it is the, the, the parking lot that's opposite, I forget what street that's on.
Simmons in.
Simmons.
It's Simmons in Lionel.
Okay, so it's a vacant lot that the county owns now that we would actually construct. They could stay in the facility. Once we moved into the new facility, then we could demolish that structure and use that pa- parking lot there for, for parking. So it was, it was just the best option all the way around. We've kind of come full circle. We have. We've gone full circle. We should have been, we, we should have eaten the apple back six years ago, but anyway. That said, I also want to point out something that I think a, a lot of my fellow board members need to recognize. And that is that the health department has been treated kind of like it wasn't eating and it wasn't drinking. That's what the phrase I use. And that is that they could use their own revenue sources and their reserves and we would have to put in very minimally from county budget into the operations. The health department ha- has revenue streams from services rendered. But those services are going down because our patients going to the health department, they don't want to go. They show up one time and they say, wow, I can't even believe this. So it is infecting, it's affecting the revenue stream. Let me, if I might, also state, we'll go back to five years ago when we decided to bring in a mobile dental lab. And I did get some pushback on that. But the mobile dental lab was purchased, it was used and renovated, refurbished. We brought it in and provided dental services to the children in our school system. And the health department was able to sustain enough revenue from that that actually added to their fund balance. So they, it actually was a profit center.
Yes, there are models there for this.
But now with the fact that the schools are shut down, that is no longer an option because we're not having any revenue stream coming in from that source. So there are, it's kind of a convergence of a lot of the perfect storm. And at this point, what our director is basically telling us is that we're going to have to put at minimum another million dollars out of county dollars to sustain them because of these mandated services that we have to provide. Now, whether or not we get that million dollars from COVID dollars or where we come up with it, one way or the other, the county's going to have to come up with another million dollars. And so when Dr. Weiss told me about it, I said, you need to come make that presentation to the full board. It is, it, it's not, it's not a pretty picture.
And Dr. Weiss, did I hear you correctly to say that there's services you could offer but can't?
Love to offer.
Okay.
There is ample opportunity and I have a lot of colleagues in other local health departments that have already started in places I can't go. A lot of it, even just the, so selfishly, I've joined, tried to join the board at a few nonprofits in town because selfishly, I'm hoping I can bring my clients over there and do some servicing because I don't have any space. I don't know what else to do. I thought about renting a storefront, but then my employees have to go over there and all the IT has to go with that. I don't, you know, I'm working with whatever I can work with. Which isn't very much.
Mr. Chairman, so all your PPE and all that stuff comes out of your budget?
Correct.
That's not associated with the COVID stuff?
There is COVID dollars, yes. There, i- if it's specifically for COVID, yes, we can use that and, and allocate that either through FEMA or through COVID dollars.
No, not through, not through COVID dollars because what we're doing today is allocating that out of payroll.
Well, that's right.
Then I'm just saying in general.
But what we would do is we could use lapsed monies from that. Now FEMA is supposed to be taking care of PPE. So, and, and you may have different information, I don't know, but, because FEMA is changing. We, we've gotten information two weeks ago that they were not covering things that they were told, that we were told they would cover back when this first started.
Imagine that.
So that is a moving, that is definitely a moving number. And, and earlier when I was talking about the CARES reallocation, I explained we were going to just try to submit everything we can and see what they will reimburse. And that's what we typically do in our natural disaster situations like hurricanes.
So if we hadn't done the community testing, which I feel very strongly about, and outside of our building, we had to put it outside of my building because it's the most cost-effective way I can do the work. We use a lot of PPE for that community testing site. We have 300 clients a week, a week come through. It's a lot, we blow through a lot of PPE there.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, that's, that's, you know, I would think that would be directly.
Well, I'm sure that there are sources, but we also have a preparedness, a very small amount of money we get from the state, one of the grant ones, for preparedness. It was part of that 550,000. I added everything together that I get, everything that's COVID-related is in that bucket. Including any like contract. I have a contract with United Way. They handle a lot of my surge capacity. I use that, that 550,000 in grant money I funded United Way to help me because I couldn't do it.
Especially on the contract tracing that we just are having style.
It's an incredible time suck.
Oh, I, I can imagine. I mean, because one can infect 10, 10 can infect.
And then the problem is you have to enter the data into five different state systems, a requirement from this, from lo- for a local health, five different systems. You can't just put it in one. You have to put it with this kind of person in one and this kind of person in another and that kind of, right?
That's more.
And that data entry, we are, we are behind June or July. That's the, that's how far back we are. I begged the state for some help. They gave me a part-time woman. She comes to the office. She does data entry. I begged them. I said, if you want my numbers at the state, you're going to have to help me. I had the supervisor of nursing entering data.
That's not very good, real search.
Don't anybody else ask?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me.
Yes, go ahead.
That's something that I wanted to ask. Mentioned the CARES Act. Following, making everything fall under payroll expenses. Doesn't that cut out a lot of the things that that money could be used for in other areas? It's, it's scary to put it all under just that when you have different categories such as medical expenses, public health, expensive actions, which, food delivery, all kinds of things. So even though it makes it simpler in financing, it's kind of sort of making it difficult for everybody that, that's in need right now. So it's like, okay, you're taking all this, putting it in this pot, but that pot doesn't work for everybody. It only works for payroll. So now we have supplies that's needed, food, delivery, all these things that are falling into these other areas that the money is not going to. So I have to re-question the CARES Act and, and putting all of that money into payroll because even though it might be simpler as a, in a financing state or for bookkeeping records or whatever, it's not allowing that money to go into the areas where it's needed also. And she's clearly here saying that she needs the money. So.
That's. Oh, yes, sir. Uh, I, I think, and Allison, please correct me if I'm wrong. The, the thought process on that was if we move all the funding in, into, to salaries, which is, is an easier accounting, that we're still going to have these expenditures in other lineups. We're still going to use those, you know, we'll still have those expenditures. Then we will move that money from salaries back to the expenditures.
It, it's not taking away.
Yeah, it's not going to ta- it's not taking away from, from actual COVID expenditures. We'll still have those expenditures that CARES money can pay, but we'll put it, we'll move it back once we know that, that, what that amount is. So it's not hindering her from having to spend that money.
Okay. If, just, just, when I understand that, it's just for me, it's, it's still a little scary because you have, I mean, just say nonprofits, for instance, that may need that money. We're giving United Way. We have all these lists of nonprofits. Now that money is in payroll. How would they, how would that money be allocated to them? How would that money be allocated for food, this, this, whatever it's needed for? It, it, because it's in this one pocket. It's, for me, just legal-wise, it kind of sort of draws a, a line like, well, if you're using it for this, how are you going to use it for these things also? So that's why I'm starting to question just a little bit, which if, if it's, if it's worked out, it's worked out, but I just have some questions about that.
Well, also just about the United Way, what we did with the United Way is we basically gave them a check for $200,000 and they did all the vetting through the nonprofits for us instead of the county having to do the vetting and keeping up with all the paperwork that was necessary. We just funneled that through the United Way.
So do they report back to us who they gave that money to?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay.
And Commissioner Foster, I, I don't know if this helps a little bit, but we've actually already done some of this reallocation. So actually in Dr. Weiss's department, she was in need of a COVID testing van. But, but the, the real deal with the CARES money is that they have been incredibly vague about how you can spend that money without it being clawed back later. So when they gave us these very clear areas that we could spend it on, we're trying to use those categories so that we know we won't be in danger of having that money recaptured by the, the state or the feds. But what that does is it frees up other monies like in payroll because the CARES money will cover that. We can reallocate that payroll expenditure for different things that the board would choose to reallocate it. And you don't have those strings where the federal or state government is saying, well, you're not allowed to spend that on. That would be at your discretion at that point. So it gives you more flexibility. And in her, the situation with the COVID testing van, we were able to use some of that lapsed money to, to help pay for that COVID testing van. She, she was able to secure a grant to fund part of it and then we used some of those lapsed funds to pay for the other part. So I don't know if that helps address maybe.
It does some, and that's just my point. If she's having difficulties and we have money making sure that some of that money is going to her for those problems and not just going to exactly payroll. You know, and keeping up with that rather, okay, we're using this for payroll, but then the money that we were using for payroll is going to XYZ to help out our citizens, help out the health department and everything.
Yes, sir. We, we, we've not limited her.
Okay.
We, we've not limited her.
The other thing I, I would like to kind of interject here is, so there are lots of expenditures that will not be covered by CARES money because if, even if you take, you know, even if you count everything that they said is possible with CARES money, there's not enough to cover it. I mean, there's just not. So what the state is asking us to do is to start tracking what's not being covered. And so we're going to probably reach out to all of our departments because I think the thought process is that when they, when the legislature comes back in January, if there are any additional funds allocated, if we have a list of things that were not reimbursed, that, that we might be eligible for additional dollars if they were to allocate that.
And part of the original CARES funding as well was all the funds had to be expended by December 30th.
That's the key.
That is the key. I mean, that's, that's the kicker.
Why we did move that to, to, because that's an easier account. But again, we do have funds available. We, we would not limit the need based upon, you know, funding.
So, so basically we would, is there a possibility we could lose the funds if we didn't allocate them by December 30th?
Yes.
So that's a, that's a no-brainer right there. And so we put them in the thing.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we put it all in salaries so that we knew we had it.
Right.
And then we'll re-own.
And then, and then that way, your, that time restriction's off of y'all's way because if something does come up, you have that flexibility after Christmas to allo- you know, to allocate those.
Yeah, because it's going to be here after Christmas too.
Right.
Like, it's just, for me, just making sure that, that payroll is still going to XYZ.
Yes, sir.
And that, that's where I want to be clear at when, when we stated it, you know what I mean? It was just like, oh, we're using it for payroll.
Yes, sir.
But it wasn't explained that we're going to use it for XYZ also. The regular payroll money for XYZ, does it help out the health department or whatever else needs to be done around the county?
And, and also when you start putting your information together and, and figures or whatever to bring back to us, please compare Wayne County with comparable counties. You mentioned Wake and Durham and, you know, we can't compete with Wake and Durham and Guilford and Forsyth. Compare Wayne County with comparable counties.
The graphs I use for the five contiguous counties, Wilson, Lenore, Duplin, Sampson and Johnson. And I have access to all data, but I use the ones in our region for that very reason.
Right.
So we're about in the middle size-wise, right? But even those counties, their county appropriation is 43% average. I, I called all of them, every one of them. And said, hey, how's it going? How are you handling this? What's your county appropriation? And I wrote down the number. Because that I can't get in the database. I have, the health director has to give me that. So I did do that. And all the data that I have access to, I, I could use all the counties. In fact, I did all 96 counties, the analysis of all of those graphs. But I only picked the ones in our area so that it would be more comparable.
Right, right.
I agree that Wake County gets 70% of their budget from their county.
I mean, we can't, you know, we can't compete with Wake and Durham and Guilford and Forsyth.
Oh, I hear you. I hear you.
Mecklenburg.
That's not even fair to compare it to.
Right, okay. Just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Trying to be fair.
Anyone else?
Thank you for the job you're doing. Hang in there. Help's on the way. We'll get through it.
Thank you.
And, and I do want to publicly thank Brenda and the work that she has done and, and, and really the outreach that she's done with the community, the grants that she's trying to get. She, you know, really, you don't get a new health director in the middle of a pandemic. And she has really truly hit the ground running. We are very lucky and very blessed to have Brenda and the job that she's doing. And, and this will just make us stronger moving forward as well.
One question, Brenda. You mentioned something about the insurance on one of your charts.
Yes, ma'am.
That if they had insurance, that you would get more revenue. I mean.
Yeah, so that was one of the things that really jumped out at me, of why we haven't had more success in the past. I wasn't here with getting people eligible for insurance and enrolled in insurance. I am dependent on another department. I cannot speak to the relationship the health department had with them. They're a great department. They're in my building. They do great work. So I have, like, looking forward to moving forward with them and getting some of that work done. I can't speak to the past though. I don't know why it wasn't done. But it is a need. I, I would bet out of that, that pie chart I showed, 44% of out-of-pocket. So if you think about it, you go to the doctor and you got to write a check, you're only going to buy so much healthcare. If you're insured, you're going to be a whole lot healthier. This is like our investment plan in our community. We got to get, that's the first thing I did in Massachusetts. I was brought into the health department as a change agent. That's what they brought me in for, fix this, right? And that was known to me when I got there. I said, okay, I got it. First thing I did is get everybody enrolled. Right? Let's do that first. And then I started offering all the services that they needed and they were like, wow, this is pretty reasonable. I can buy, you know, all the things I need to get that I've been putting off because I can't afford it. And I think that's just really the value of health insurance that even just from a health literacy standpoint, people don't really under, even understand.
Well, I think that is a priority there if we can look at that.
I, yeah, I'm trying to take step, right now, I'll be honest with you, we are so overwhelmed with COVID. The phones ring off the wall. You saw 820 man-hours a month. It's all hands-on debt for COVID people. I mean, it's like, insurance, okay, yo, it's over here, you know? We trying, but it's just overwhelming.
Well, let me ask a question on that, on that, um, and I might be talking way off base here, but I mean, as far as if, if you could get, that sounds like that would be a.
Low-hanging fruit.
Yeah. I mean, because it, it, I mean, if you had some help and the two, two departments communicating that you start the process, I mean, you know, I'm just, I mean, that would be, you've got, you've got 625. I know you got other than that, but you're 625 on a regular basis.
Should be at least double that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
And, and, and that's a conversation we can have with Kim as well, but, but.
Yeah, she's great.
Right, right.
But one of the things also, vaccine, you know, we're, we're talking right now, testing and everything else.
Oh, I understand it. You haven't got time to do besides that.
Oh, the vaccines is such a heavy lift.
Yeah.
Oh, my Lord. It's mind-boggling. On Friday at 5:05, I got all these boxes delivered. I was the only one in the building. I'm like, huh? And there were 20 boxes, not the vaccine, but the syringes and the, I'm like, I was like trying to scramble around to get a, totally, UPS won't put them in the building. They will not go into a health department building. They left them out in the foyer and thank God that one of the security guys was there. Came and got me. We, you know, dragged it in. It's already started. And we are responsible for doing most of the congregant settings because healthcare facilities don't want to handle it.
Right.
We have, we have started meeting staff on a weekly basis and, you know, looking at, at options and, and working with our staff. And I think you've seen some information as well. So, you know, we're, we're following what the CDC says. We're following all the federal guidelines. But, you know, we, we're trying to roll this out to the public just as quickly as we possibly can.
And there's fear. Some of the public is fearful. We have to get over that.
So if we get in front of it, I mean, when we got the actual help, you, because you know it's coming.
Yes, sir.
Oh, it's coming next week.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We're, we're slated to go. We're week two. Week one is this week. We're week two.
Do you have a refrigeration equipment?
Thank you. Thanks for asking. So I had to do a very big inventory, which I had to do myself because I didn't have the ability to handle it, to apply as a vaccine provider. And we did do an inventory. If I get the Moderna vaccine, which we probably will, local health probably won't get Pfizer because that's ultra-cold.
Oh, okay.
Right? Only UNC will probably get that. We made the pitch that I have. We made the pitch that I have a lot of refrigerators that aren't being used, and I can handle the Moderna. So the state is, actually, we have three more calls today on it. They're going to preferentially give us Moderna, although the state is not a passer. It comes directly from the manufacturer. So Moderna hopefully we get, and I can handle the freezer. Otherwise, if you get Pfizer, dry ice comes within 24 hours of that shipment. Hopefully, it comes during work hours, the dry ice. But it's supposed to come. And not just that, I'm going to get a shipment every day. So you're going to need two doses. Let's say this take Commissioner Gurley. You need two doses, and they need to be four weeks apart. So you're, I'm going to come see you. You're going to come see me on week one. I got to go find you, or you got to find me on week four, and you got to get the exact same version. You got to get the Pfizer if you got the Pfizer, right?
That's the kind of scenario with the hepatitis shot. You had to, if you didn't get the vaccine out of it, it'd work.
And I can't tell you just from the testing side, how many people give us numbers that don't work, addresses I can't send tough to.
So you've got, you've got refrigeration needs.
I got the refrigeration done. We have some mobile things because of our preparedness office is pretty good. So we had that covered, but I, the Pfizer would be more problematic. Hopefully, we'll have the mobile van out, take it on the road. I think we're going to have to.
Have you got a redundancy on the actual refrigeration? I mean, because one, if a compressor goes down, you know.
Well, that's the thing. We do have the generators back up.
I'm talking about the compressor on the actual unit can go down. I mean, that's what I'm saying.
That's going to be a hard question, but I definitely do.
Well, I'm just, well, I hope not, but I'm just saying, you know, you got to have some type of redundancy, some kind.
Yeah.
I'm not saying, I'm not going at you. I'm just saying, I'm telling Craig you got to have some redundancy.
Yeah, because you're using words I don't understand.
I understand.
But we're also, I will say this for our emergency preparedness director, Aaron Stryker, is also doing a wonderful job coordinating with Brenda about the needs and about what the next steps are. So again, I think it is, as I put in the weekly update, it's a bullet train that's coming. And we're just trying to manage it as much as we can. But hopefully, the more information we have and once we get past the phases, we'll be able to get it out to the public as quickly as possible.
Yeah, so we're creating our county plan for the rollout. We're required by the state to follow certain guidelines, so we're just dealing with that, so.
And I apologize for asking so many questions.
Oh, no.
But I mean, it's just being an emergency services. Being an emergency services for 37 years, you know, you've got to plan ahead because something's going, things are going to happen beyond your control. So you got to have a redundancy plan in place.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and then the long-term care facilities in all the congregates, they've already been calling off the wall, like, will you come help me? Will you come do it? I'm like, uh, which one are you? So just trying to make lists of things, like, how many do you have? Where do the, you know? We don't have these composite systems in place for our county. We just can't tap into a system and go, here's everything we have. We have to create them for this process, so anyway. We're good?
We're good. All right. But we will, for our next meeting, we will bring you back a hazard pay.
Analysis. I can do an analysis.
Right, recommendation, and look at overall, and we'll give you costs as well.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we wanting to, are we ready to break for lunch or? We've still got some to go.
We're close.
We're close.
Y'all want to continue? We're close.
Yeah, we got lunch?
Yeah, lunch is here.
What we got?
But, uh.
Brisket.
Really?
Yeah, we need to go ahead and break now, and we got brisket. We'd hate for it to get cold. Do I have a motion for going recess, or can I just? Okay, this meeting is recess for lunch. Stay in the building, please. We are back in session. Let's see, where are we in this appointment committee? Former committee. Does have recommendations.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Former committee makes the following recommendations to be voted on January 5, 2021. The reappraisal of Barry Gray to the Goldsboro Wayne Transportation Authority Board of Directors. Now, I need, do I just need to read all these, or?
We do them one at a time. You're right, Carol.
This is to be voted on. This is just recommendation.
No, we recommend recommendations to date.
This is for the same board that, ways that you did it this morning during the.
Got you. So I do have to have a motion or not?
No. We vote on, we vote on these next meeting, right?
Got you.
Okay.
Appoint Sheila Exum to the Wayne County Tourism Development Alliance as recommended by the Wayne County Tourism Development Alliance Board. Appoint the following to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Program. Dr. Marshall, Marcia Manning, Dr. Shreinow, Dr. Brenda Weiss, Colleen Kozinski. Reappoint the following to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Program. Chief Mike West, Sheriff Larry Pierce, Matthew Delbridge, Jerry Burns, Brooke Milkelson, Kimberly McGuire, Carol Bowden, Marlene Hubbell, Jordan Wildman, Justin Pittman, Beth Heath, Selena Whirl, Mary Ann Dudley, Felicia Brown, Sidney R. Hill, Beverly Bell, H. Leroy Lewis, and Branny Vickery.
That is recommendations to vote on in our next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Do we have anything to act on today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. New business, Mr. Honeycutt.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, new business in your agenda packet. We have discussion and possible approval of a joint agreement for facilities used between Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, Wayne County Board of Education, and the County of Wayne. And again, this is on pages 33 through 36 in your agenda packet. Really, basically, this memorandum is for all three parties to get together to begin discussions, to see if this is feasible. There is a facility on base that they have, that they're willing to allow us to use. They're looking at having half of the kids come from base and half of the kids coming from Wayne County. And I think they're looking at something very similar to the School of Engineering, which has been very successful. But this agreement really just gives us direction to begin the discussion. It's not committing us to doing this. It's not committing funding at this time. There are a lot of details that have to be worked out in this agreement before anything is finally formally approved by all three parties. So I think the last I heard, the understanding was they were looking at starting this in 2022, the fall of 2022. So we have, you know, almost a year and nine months to try to get something resolved and an agreement done.
And just to clarify, you said the 50/50 will be children of personnel at the base?
Yes, sir.
And then the other 50% would be just any children in the school system?
Yes, sir.
And they said, and I think they also said that, you know, if the base couldn't reduce to 50%, that the county could pick up those other seats.
Right, what they said. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. There is a lot of details, but this would basically allow us, you know, the direction and the support just to begin that, those discussions.
And I've, I've had some concerns, and I've talked to Mr. Honeycutt and Mr. Parker, and Mr. Neal knows, you know, what my concerns were. And they assured me that what's in here is just, this is just an agreement to talk. This is, there's no, there's no agreement binding the county to anything right now.
We can walk away at any time.
But because I didn't feel comfortable signing something not knowing what was in it. But all this is, is just for the three parties to sit down and talk.
Yeah, and I think there are some concerns that our attorney does have that if you do decide to approve this, this would be based upon final review by our county attorney.
Have you heard, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, have you heard of anyone that has objected to any of this plan going at this point?
No, sir.
No objections?
School board has approved, and the base is all behind it.
I haven't heard any negatives on it either. Well, they were just, they were waiting for my signature, and I don't know whether they've even brought it to you yet or not. But I didn't want to sign anything until y'all, I had y'all's blessing because I didn't want to commit the county to anything other than talking right now.
Yes, sir.
But I told Craig, I said, you know, until the board approves me silent, I'm not going to sign this document.
And, Mr. Chairman, at this point, does our attorney feel comfortable with Mr. Acock, Commissioner Acock signing this?
I think so, based on what he said, because it's just to say that you're going to discuss it with them.
Yes, sir.
You're not being bound to pay anything.
Okay, I was just making sure because Mr. Honeycutt said that he would, you would review it after he signed it, so.
Well, there may be, there may be some minor changes that they want to add later. But that way, if there are, that doesn't specifically change the intent that we wouldn't have to bring back if there are minor changes that the attorney did make, so.
But anything that's not minor would come back to us just in case, so for us to approve again.
Yes, sir.
Particularly if it's going to cost you any money. What's the, what's the pleasure to board?
I'd like a motion that we grant Mr. Acock signing privileges, and also that Mr. Parker review the document if there's any changes.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? If none, all in favor, raise your hand. You get it, Madam Clerk? Consent agenda.
We do, we went over the consent agenda in our pre-agenda meeting. Remember, we did add number 10, CARES funding reallocation to the consent agenda. And if there's no questions, we would ask that this be approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the addition of item 10, the CARES funding. Have a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
Um, one, excuse me, one question about the CARES fund. How long have we had that money?
Um, I'm sorry.
CARES funding, um.
The CARES funding, how long have we had the money?
Yes.
It came in two allotments. So the first one was probably back in, I want to say, May or June. And then our second allotment came in July.
So we've had it since July, and we're down to the deadline, which is the 31st to move it. That kind of sort of bothers me a little bit because the money's already been allocated for United Way and some of the other people in the city of Goldsboro. But the remainder of the money just sat and kind of sort of not being used. So that just bothers me a little bit. And now we're down to 15 days before the deadline. That's just not something that I personally agree with. But, I mean, I'm fine with the motion moving on, but I just wanted to make that statement.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I know it was a motion to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 10. I wasn't certain if I heard the removal of item 76 for the Maxwell Center. Did we get clarity on?
Oh, we did remove that budget.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
You are correct. Thank you for catching that.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
That did get removed. I had a conversation with James, and we will be bidding that out.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, we need to ask for the notice.
Do we have anyone signed that's a public comment?
We do not have public comments.
Here's the written one in the knowledge, like, okay. Can a manager's report?
Just wanted to mention a couple of things to remind our new commissioners and anybody who would like to attend that Thursday, beginning at 8:00 a.m., we will have our orientation with department heads. It will run from 8:00 to 10:00, and then we will come back at 10:00 or 12:20. It's 8:00 to 10:00, then we'll be off from 10:00 to 12:00. And then we'll have lunch at 12:10. And then we'll work on until everybody gets done. So we'll get all the orientation done, and hopefully you'll meet the department heads and have a small presentation, and they'll be giving you some information as well. So we'll be doing that on Thursday.
We're going to be doing it in here, in here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
He said 8:00 to 10:00.
8:00 to 10:00, and then we'll adjourn and come back at 12:00. 10:00 after 12:00. We have a tuna sandwich.
And if I could inquire, it's just basically an orientation regards to what each department's doing. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It is.
We're not talking money or anything?
No, just orientation, really more of a meet and greet kind of thing. And, you know, talk about each department, what they do, where they're located, staffing issues, but not really requests of anything about budget or anything.
It's just a quarter county delay. It's just a quarter county delay.
But other than that, I don't have anything else, but just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and excited about next year. And I appreciate y'all's support today and your commitment and the questions that were asked. And looking forward to working with the board in the new year. So I think there's some great things coming from Wayne County. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board commissioners' committee reports. Probably don't have many reports, but at least give each commissioner the opportunities. First up, Mr. Foster.
Just thank you for being here. I'm looking forward to working with all of the commissioners, looking forward to representing Wayne County, looking forward to representing District 3. Thank you.
Madam Acock?
Well, I just want to thank the staff and everyone that's been participative in the Joe Gurley EMS ribbon cutting and also the support. We had it Fremont for Sanctuary Systems. And I have begun to also visit some of the, you know, department heads because I want to get to meet them on a firsthand basis. And I met the director of EMS yesterday, who I was very impressed with, and David. And hopefully, I can get around to meet some more department heads and let them get to know me as well as me get to know them.
And that's available to any commissioner at any time. People are just letting it go online, setting it off.
And Merry Christmas.
Mr. Horace?
Just want to let everyone know, as Dr. Weiss said, the vaccine is starting to roll out. We started getting it into hospital this week, and we're using the Pfizer vaccine. The problem with it is it has to be stored at a minus 80 degrees. Don't ask me why, but we actually had to go get a refrigerator, refrigeration unit for it. Okay, so it's coming along, it's slowly happening, but it is happening. And again, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mr. Wade?
First off, I'm honored that I have the opportunity to serve with this board. I look forward to working with this board and doing some great things in this county. I also wanna thank my constituents, those that voted for me and gave me the opportunity to be a voice for them. I wanna wish you all Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Mr. Doherty?
Well, it's Christmas time. We're all excited about that. And I look forward to working with the board. We've got some new faces, and we definitely are going to try to find some way forward to make Wayne County better. I think that's what we're all here about. So I wanna wish everybody a real Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Mr. Gurley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, as far as committee reports, our Appointment Committee met this morning for the first time and did our first order of business. I'd like to thank all the people in District Five that entrusted me to be their commissioner. It's an honor. I appreciate it. I'm kind of a, I guess I could be considered a little bit of the jokester, I guess, on the board. I'm a firm believer in having fun of what you do and kinda carrying on a little bit. I told Joe I got some sticky notes so I could communicate with him, you know, back and forth. But, no, just seriously, I appreciate the opportunity to work with the staff and know most of you, you know, a long time, and I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas, be safe, and have a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the rest of the board for entrusting in me to be chairman. And I was chairman a couple, for two years, several years back, so give me a meeting or two, I'm a little bit rusty at it, but it's very humbling to know the rest of you gentlemen and Ms. Acock, put the confidence in me to be chairman. It's, I'd say, very humbling and an honor and a privilege. And also, I would like to thank all of our department and department heads, especially the ones that are involved heavily with the COVID. I know our EMS department and the nine-one-one call-takers especially have been... But that first one's in line, I mean, they're kinda like you and about, or they're on the front lines. We've been blessed to have very few cases of it, but I want to thank them, and I also want to thank all of the other departments for doing an outstanding job. You know, we praise them for what they do, but then sometimes we kinda criticize them also, but we do appreciate what they do. And just wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Some of us has lost loved ones in the recent year. Keep those families in your prayers, but we've had, this has been a tough year with the COVID, and I really know a way to explain it, but we're looking for bigger and better things next year, and I'm confident that this board is gonna make great things happen for Wayne County. As I said earlier, we're gonna have differences of opinions, but that's what we're supposed to do. If we all had the same opinion, this would be a dull place to live. And I also want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and be safe. Thank you. Now, I think we do need a closed session, Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir, to consult with your attorneys to preserve attorney-client privilege.
Okay, before we get started, this is closed session, and we then have everything cut off, correct?
We will as soon as, I need a motion from someone?
Okay. Need a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we go in closed session to...
Have a motion go in closed session, all in favor, right hand. Thank you. We are back in session. Mr. Harrison, I understand that you've got a...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we direct the finance office to prepare a forty-nine-thousand-dollar budget amendment to finalize and to finally resolve all issues in the office of the chair. Wade?
Wade. I have a motion on the floor, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, share sign of right hand. Motion carries. Was in the opposition? Okay, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
You want me to oppose?
Thank you, thank you for all the hard work on the...
Any, anyone else have anything before we go adjourn?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. We're adjourned.